Thank you. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We have a, we have a lot of business to go on tonight. So what I'm going to do is we're going to do the, move the citizens forum, or I guess we call it the open forum now. We're going to move that to after the airport. And we're going to then handle all of the public comment. Because most of these, I can tell by the audience, most of these are going to be up with the sign ordinance. And there is nothing that the city council can do tonight for, on the sign ordinance, because we are permitted to do that by the Brown Act. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through the rest of the agenda first. And then we will consider all of the citizens forum, all of the open forum comments afterwards. So please bear with us. We'll get through the agenda pretty quickly. And we're going to move ahead to, there's no presentations, moving on to the consent calendar. Would anybody wish to pull anything on consent? Okay, I heard somebody may have a, a comment on consent. Is that true? Yes.
Mayor, we have, we have several.
Okay, all right, very good.
First speaker is Von Rainey.
Oh, Van Rainey.
Van Rainey, apologies.
So mayor, city council members, I just came up to make a comment on the consent items involving landscape contractors. And what I'm hoping is that in the future, we can require all landscape contracts levied through the city of Livermore to require electric or battery powered appliances on all landscaping equipment. You know, similar to what the state is attempting to incentivize now. But basically have that as a requirement in all our contracts going forward.
Okay, that's a great suggestion. Certainly limit noise impacts. Yeah, great, very good.
Well, noise and it's, a blower can cause more than most cars, so.
Right, yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
Next speaker is Constance Cops, followed by David McWigan.
Hi, I'm commenting on two items, five one and five eleven. And five one, I'm concerned that the minutes that if they go approved, that they're not really reflective of like what actually occurred. I did speak on that issue, on one of the issues. And it happened that I brought up my comments right after Bob Bin had talked. And then I don't think it just depicts some responses to that as well. So I would like the minutes to be looked at again to make sure that everything's recorded properly. Then, on five eleven, what do they want to say? Okay, that sewage that there, you guys are, I guess relinquishing, that easement for that property. And I was wondering if that map is all shown on that area? Or if that actually extends into North Livermore or more? Or if that is just the area adjacent to Chick-fil-A? And I always kind of was kind of wondering like why zone seven and Livermore water is separate? And I understand that maybe there was some deals made to take over that from zone seven? And I really need to know this because I have other questions. I can't figure out how to ask, ask if I don't know that information. You get what I'm saying? I know I'm all over the place sometimes. Sorry, that's how I am. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The final speaker is David McWigan.
I'm here to comment on five point two, the special levies taxes. Against those taxes, then I will be making my comment by a sign protest.
I will point out that this is his constitutional right to have three minutes at the dais. And this is how he is choosing to use it.
Thank you.
Are there any others, other speakers for tonight?
There are no further speakers.
Okay, then I'm going to close the comment period for the consent calendar. Is anybody from the council wish to pull an item for comments, for a comment on consent? No? Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Hi.
Councilmember Branning.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kick is absent. Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, six point one, a public hearing for the confirmation of levy assessments for the city's landscape maintenance districts. We have a staff presentation?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. This is your city manager, Mariana Madrasheva. Item six point one is going to be presented by Marissa Gunn, management analyst in the Public Works Department.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Marissa Gunn, and I am the management analyst in the maintenance division of the Public Works Department. The city currently has ninety-two landscape maintenance districts organized under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. In order to levy assessments to pay for the maintenance of these districts, the city must conduct a public hearing. On May twenty-second, the city council approved the notice of intent and adopted tonight, June twenty-sixth, as the public hearing date. Each year, staff reviews the cost, maintenance level, and long-term financial stability of these ninety-two districts. Staff then recommends the level of assessment required to meet both the short-term and long-term maintenance needs of each district. Staff has completed this process, and all of the proposed assessments contained in the engineer's report are within the pre-approved allowable adjustments. Staff is asking for council to conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution confirming the levy assessments. This concludes my presentation. Staff are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public?
No, we do not.
Okay, well, I'm going to close the public comment period. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, do you have a motion?
To approve.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Barry Antos.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Branning. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Hi.
Councilmember Branning.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Onto six point two, hearing to receive and consider all evidence reports regarding the adoption of the master fee schedule.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Madrasheva. Item six point two is going to be presented by our director of administrative services, Tina Olson.
It's in there somewhere.
All right, we're ready. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Tina Olson, your administrative services director. I am presenting the city's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four master fee schedule. So the master fee schedule is intended to be a single document where all fees for city-related services and activities are located. The schedule does not include development impact fees, landscape maintenance district assessments, or franchise fees. It is an industry best practice to review and update the master fee schedule annually. Most fees are adjusted by the annual change in CPI. This year, that's five point three percent. These fees are intended to recover the actual cost of providing the service that were established by an external fee study and reviewed annually. The staff report mentions fees that were approved by council that are being added, or there are fees that are no longer being used, are not applicable, and being deleted. Both these items are included in the master fee schedule, although more administratively. As such, tonight I'm focusing on the proposed new fees and the modified fees. So we are proposing to add four new fees to the master fee schedule. The first fee before you is the credit debit card fee. The city accepts credit and debit cards as a payment method. The processing fees that the bank charges for this service historically been absorbed by the city. The processing fees are now too large for the city to absorb. Staff proposes to pass through the actual credit and debit card processing fee to the customer, reducing the cost to the city by approximately three hundred thousand dollars annually. Customers can avoid this fee by choosing a different payment type. The city accepts cash, checks, electronic funds transfer, as well as ACH payments, giving customers several options. The second fee is a two percent technology fee that the building division proposes to add to all permits based on the permit price that will provide funds to recover permit and plan review software licensing, archiving, and other technology costs associated with permitting, plan review, and inspections. Charging a technology fee is a common practice at a rate of the cost of permit-related software. And it did want to note, and we noted in the staff report, that the two percent fee is the lowest in the area. The third group of new fees is under the Affordable Housing Program. Specifically, the Housing and Human Services Division is proposing to add some administrative fees to the master fee schedule. The new unit sales administrative fee charged at one point five percent of the below-market rate sales price, as well as a document fee of forty dollars, which is a pass few, pass-through fee from the third party handling the housing loans for the city, are included in the Affordable Housing agreements already approved by city council, but have not been included in the master fee schedule. There's also a new below-market rental monitoring fee that will include the cost of third-party monitoring specialists to review each project's compliance with the city's regulatory requirements and to inspect a sampling of tenant files. These are set on a sliding scale based on the number of below-market rentals in each project. The last new fee is a fifty-four dollar lost hydrant wrench fee that the Water Resources Division is proposing to add to recover the cost of buying new hydrant wrenches that have been issued and not returned. So the modified fees are the fees that are increased beyond CPI. We are proposing to change the unit size of siding permits from four hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. When a permit is issued for a project over a thousand square feet, the project includes replacing all the building siding or stucco, requiring additional time and inspections. Accordingly, the fee will increase from three hundred and ninety-seven dollars to eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to correspond with the increased unit size. The fifty cent replacement dog tag fee is a correction of a staff error inadvertently made last year. And the last proposed fee modification is police reports. And police reports released by civil subpoenas cost a department twelve dollars, including the direct cost of duplication and search and retrieval time. State law allows cities to recover the direct cost of production, reproduction, excuse me. And that concludes my presentation. Staff recommends city council adopt a resolution adopting the city's master fee schedule, incorporating certain fee charges, changes, excuse me, and superseding resolution twenty twenty-two dash one one five. And staff is available to answer questions.
My microphone, there we go. Do we have any public comment?
No comments have been received.
Okay, very good. I'll bring it back to the council. I'll close the public comment period. Just a quick question, Ms. Olson. We're not making money on this. This is basically just to recover the costs that the city incurs for providing these services. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes. We, we have to, by state law, restrict it to just cost recovery.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick question comments for staff. We'll see, they might fall in either category. You tell me. But two items, basically. One is I'm hoping we can look to try to move towards a per-square-foot fee schedule as much as possible versus per-unit, wherever we can do that. I think that's a little more equitable. And then, I don't know if this is, pertains directly to tonight, but while I was going through the feed schedule, I saw that staff review goes up to four units for a project. And then planning commission review starts at five, which is a considerably lengthier and more expensive process. And I think we should look at probably increasing that number. I don't know what the right num, number to increase it to is, but I think that staff review could go up to, say, ten units or something in that range.
This is Paul Spence, your community development director. We can take a look at both of those things. We are going to be doing a development code update early next year. And so that would be the time for us to look at thresholds for staff versus planning commission review. And we can take a look at that. We have been moving, that's your second question, back to your first question. We have been moving towards a per-square-foot fee where appropriate. And the next time that we do a master fee study update, we will look to do some more of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I know the questions, comments. Do I have a motion?
I move staff recommendation.
Moved by Councilmember Carling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Branning. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Hi.
Councilmember Branning.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, on to the main event. Item seven point one, this is the discussion and recommended approval of the airport leasing and development policy. We have a staff presentation?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. This is once again your city manager, Mariana Madrasheva. Item seven point one is going to be presented by Michael Moska, our airport manager for the city. Thank you. Mayor, council members, just give us a moment to deal with technical difficulties.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Michael Muska, the airport manager. And this evening, I'm going to be presenting the proposed airport leasing and development policy. Tonight, the council is going to consider the proposed, proposed policy only. There's no development proposed at the airport. And the policy does not change zoning or the airport master plan. It's not called for or allow for airport expansion. The policy provides clear goals, objectives, and criteria to evaluate the development proposals. It requires consistency with the twenty-ten dash zero-five-eight resolution. It requires public outreach, airport commission review, and of course, city council approval. It also discourages large-scale air cargo operators. It discourages others, or, there is no runway extension proposed. And it does not include any, it does include noise reduction efforts. There are additional revisions that were provided in the supplemental to address noise, leaded fuel, and public participation issues. There are four specific revisions to the plan that are presented. The first one is with regard to environmental. It's, the policy pledges to minimize adverse impacts to noise, air, water pollution, reducing air pollution, supporting a transition from leaded to unleaded fuel as it becomes feasible, and actions to prevent PFOS or other contamination into the water system. I also want to point out that the, the type, the font and red are included in the revisions that are presented tonight as a result of, as a result of letters that we received from the city Pleasanton and public input as well. The, the second revision to the policy is with regard to public engagement. Any kind of proposed projects will provide opportunities for public input and inquiry from residents and surrounding communities. Next, please. The third revision is with regard to function. Any kind of development, we are encouraging development of landed improvements to occur in response to existing aviation demand. Next, please. And of course, the visual one has not changed to establish high-quality standards for architectural and landscape design. But with regard to economic revisions, we are encouraging the supporting of small parcel air cargo services that serve only businesses and residences in the Tri-Valley region. The next slide is an aerial shot of the airport and the surrounding area. And it depicts six different areas for land use at the airport. Ask you to pay particular attention to the yellow area, which is the on-airport undeveloped or developable land, which is approximately eighty-three and a half acres. The, go back, please, thanks. And the off-airport undeveloped land, which is about sixty-six acres. And that's depicted on there as well. Please. And with regard to a public input on the proposed airport development plan, the policy was presented to the Pleasanton and Dublin liaisons and to the airport commission. The proposed policy was posted online for a forty-five-day public review. And as a result of that, over a hundred and twenty comments were received from thirty community members. The relevant comments were incorporated into the draft policy. Subsequent to that, on June twenty-one, the city of Pleasanton submitted a letter. And most of those comments in that letter from June twenty-first have been addressed in the supplemental materials that were published today. And finally, staff recommends that the council approve the leasing and development policy for the Livermore Airport this evening. Any questions?
Does that conclude the staff report?
That concludes the staff report. Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do is open this up for the public hearing. And then we bring it back to the council if there's any further questions. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do, mayor. We're going to start with our.
First question, how many public comments do we have so far?
We have eighteen so far.
Eighteen? Okay, I think we can, we can go for three minutes then.
Great. Our first speaker is Felicia Ziamac, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Gia Kiper.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and city council. As a registered nurse, I have a moral duty to alert you when I believe residents may be harmed by something the city is doing. If residents live within a one-and-a-half-mile radius of Livermore Airport, there's a good chance they and their children are being exposed to harmful levels of lead from aviation fuel. The proposed airport leasing and development policy states one goal is to minimize adverse impacts on the environment, but it doesn't discuss stopping the sale of leaded aviation fuel until it was updated a couple hours ago. Over three hundred thousand gallons were sold in the last year. Emissions from piston-engine aircraft collectively account for about seventy percent of lead released domestically into the atmosphere. The lead poisoning surrounding San Jose's Reed Hillview Airport, a similar-sized airport, was found after Santa Clara County commissioned a peer-reviewed, ten-year study of children living near the airport. The findings were the risk of elevated blood lead levels depended on direction of the prevailing winds and the child's residential distance from the airport. Children residing less than one-half mile from Reed Hillview Airport had lead levels higher than the levels found in children during the Flint, Michigan water system failures. Children residing one-half to one-and-a-half miles away had a modest increase in blood lead levels. CDC states, quote, "No safe blood level, lead level in children has been identified." Even low levels of lead in blood have been shown to affect IQ, ability to pay attention, and academic achievement. I've been monitoring wind direction here, and it's predominantly west to east or southwest to northeast. Children living downwind had higher blood lead levels around Reed Hillview Airport. What residential areas are within one-and-a-half-mile radius of the airport? It appears the straight-line distance between the airport and the Isabel Neighborhoods Pacific Plan, DeNova Homes Project at North Canyon's Parkway and Tria Drive is one mile. And appears the straight-line distance between the airport and Tulare's Avenue in the Montage neighborhood is one point four one miles. In my opinion, you don't need to perform your own study. This one was professionally performed and peer-reviewed. You should update the policy to declare a date you'll stop selling leaded aviation fuel. Reed Hillview stopped selling at January twenty-twenty-two, the first airport to do so. The FAA did challenge this action, but Santa Clara County prevailed and ended leaded fuel sales. It's important the city ends the threat of lead exposure to its residents. And I'll forward the links to all these documents to you, including the county's letter back to the FAA. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Gia Kiper, followed by Tara S. Kiper.
Excuse me. I encourage everybody to have the opportunity to speak. And so when someone is speaking, they're facing the council. And so if someone is applauding, they're obviously in agreement. But if they disagree, then we've actually had people boo in the, in the chambers. And that's unacceptable, and it inhibits people from, from speaking. So we institute a rule here that if you agree with what the speaker is saying, please raise your hand to show that you are in agreement. And that way, it doesn't intimidate the speaker because they're facing us. I do not encourage booing and to give equal time to everybody. I don't encourage applause either. So if you please, we try to maintain this decorum in the, in the council chamber. So yeah, if you agree with what they're saying, raise your hand. And, and then we can see from the council the affirmation. But again, please, no applause, no booing. Let's have respect for each speaker. Thank you. Thank you. Please.
Okay, I like the clapping for other reasons. Both are me.
But we have to be fair to everyone. And there have been situations where people did not agree, and it became very unpleasant.
Understood. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Shirley Lewandowski, and I live in Dublin. A city's development is only as good as when it enhances the quality of life of its residents. Livermore did a great job renovating and invigorating its downtown area because it expanded and enhanced the cultural and entertainment enjoyment of your residents, and nearby residents like me to take advantage of. I ask you continue to keep in mind the importance of residents' quality of life when you deliberate this proposed airport leasing and development policy. I ask you to see the need to incorporate more detailed specificity in mitigating many ways to further minimize noise levels, ensure clean air and water, as these impact the quality of life for residents who live near the airport and employees who work at the airport. What can you do? You can demand FAA outline flight paths that are mandatory, not voluntary, to minimize airplane noise over Tri-Valley neighborhoods. You can halt sale of leaded aviation fuel now to stop lead emissions in the air that poisons the bloodstream of children living close by. You can make sure chemicals used at the airport that may potentially have pollutants like PFAs don't get into the groundwater and soil that would endanger the well-being of humans. You can do all this, but will you? Will you implement a specific noise level not to be exceeded instead of an average level? Will you immediately specify only unleaded fuel be sold in use at the airport? Will you find a study? Will you fund a study to explore whether PFAs are present at the airport? And if so, immediately move to eliminate them? Will you support Five Rivers Aviation's environmental proposals to move towards utilizing solar panels and producing green hydrogen to power airport operations? You can absolutely do all these things. Let residents know how we can help you make them happen. Please postpone any decision on this policy until it has incorporated more specificity in what needs to be done. What you do, when you do, you have once again prioritized first and foremost your residents' and Tri-Valley neighbors' quality of life, just like you did in downtown Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gia Kieper, followed by Tara Kieper, followed by John Youngblood.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gia Kieper, and I'm an incoming junior at La Cita High School Middle College, and I'm studying
A little bit closer to the microphone, please.
And I am studying towards a master's in aeronautical engineering. My journey in aviation started four years ago when I read an article about the Boeing-sponsored aeronautical design competition. Together, my brother and I designed an aircraft that could win a prize, but since I was eighteen, they would not let us participate. But they don't. Being young can be a real pain, even if you actually want to do something. But the project brought us to Livermore Airport, and we became members of the local chapter's Experimental Aircraft Association. What could be better than getting together with other guys that build and restore amazing airplanes and fly kids for free? Since our chapter has started a youth program where we are building a Cree-Cree, a real but very small, single-seater aircraft. We're using a thoroughly-designed electrical drivetrain instead of a standard gas engine, and we'll fly remote control that first. A larger project is already on the horizon. For the build session last Saturday, we had almost three times as many young builders than just two months ago. Their numbers will continue to grow because of the chapter's offers of constantly expanding, and we are getting even better at showing youth the amazing opportunities in aviation. The EAA chapter is a great place to learn and grow, and also learn a few things. One of the reasons why our youth programs can be so successful is the support of Five Rivers and Livermore Airport's FBO. The hangar space for our youth builds is free, as well as the conference room for our chapter meetings, and the field for our youth flights, and the additional airplanes, including pilots that they provide for our Young Eagles flights if needed. Can you imagine what we could achieve with the new facilities included in the proposal? Dedicated build hangars room that we can equip specifically for various additional youth classes. The planned community college hangar and maintenance training facility would be the ideal potential partner to provide and look at the professional aviation maintenance work, while paying high-skill jobs and a perfect step for many of our young people. On top of that, there is proposed cutting-edge solar electric and green hydrogen development. It would allow us to show and teach kids the clean future of aviation at the world's greenest airport. The proposed concept would make Livermore Airport a better-than-textbook example of future-oriented development for the Tri-Valley residents of all ages and the environment we live in. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tara Kieper, followed by John Youngblood, followed by Jean King.
Good afternoon.
The volume is up as high as it can go, but if you can just, the microphone is conical, so make sure you speak directly into it, please.
Okay, is this a good volume that everyone hear? Hello, everyone. I've just graduated from La Cita High School Middle College. I've been working in engineering development for ten years. Stanford and NASA say I'm doing a pretty good job. A month ago, I received my latest award from Innovation Tri-Valley Leadership Group. Since 2019, I've been working on hydrogen fuel cell-powered electrical aviation. Hydrogen fuel cells are the green range-extending technology for electric aircraft. At industry symposiums, we routinely receive investment and cooperation offers from overseas events, from overseas, even at events down at NASA Ames. The whole world is investing massively in electrical aviation because it's quiet, because it's green, because the green future of aviation, enormous markets, and because it's quiet. Quietness is an indispensable commercial feature of the upcoming generation of electric aircraft. The technology's trademark noise reduction of about ninety percent below current aircraft is a game-changing attribute that opens up entirely new applications and markets that developers are after. Electric aircraft combine practically noiseless motors with propellers that trade a few percent of aerodynamic efficiency for a literal order of magnitude in noise reduction. Electric aircraft operating from Livermore Airport would simply not be heard by neighbors, and their multi-redundant powertrains make them very safe. In the U.S., we have Sears catching up to do electrical and hydrogen-powered aviation compared to Asia, Europe, the UAE, or Saudi Arabia. Stuttgart Airport in Germany, for example, is building a hydrogen aviation center due to open next year. The airport's partner in this project is Age2Fly, a subsidiary of Joby Aviation. Joby is a Bay Area company and one of the biggest players in the area. But here at home, they sit in an aviation-hydrogen semi-desert. Just like many other companies, we actually have all the building blocks for hydrogen aviation in the area, from suppliers to companies already flying hydrogen-powered aircraft from recently fueled by trucks coming from far away. These companies are inefficiently scattered throughout the Bay Area because there's no hub with hydrogen infrastructure. An electric hydrogen aviation center at Livermore Airport would be an amazing opportunity and have a huge competitive advantage for Livermore as a location for green, high-tech jobs. So that's what I wrote to Pete Sandu, hoping to create awareness for an unused potential, and was amazed to learn that he had already worked out a proposal for an investment of game-changing scale that would make Livermore Airport city of the yachts in green aviation. The realization of these plans would be a big plus for every Livermore resident, especially regarding the airport noise reduction, renewable energy, and environmental protection. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is John Youngblood, followed by Jean King, followed by David Fiala.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Marshand, members of the board. My name is John Youngblood. I'm the president of the Experimental Aircraft Association. You've heard about already this evening. I'm very proud of our volunteers, Gia and Tara, in the program. We're a nonprofit organization of nearly a hundred and thirty aviation enthusiasts. We're a nonprofit group, and for over thirty years, our pilot volunteers have taken youths ages eight through seventeen for Saturday morning airplane rides around the Tri-Valley area from the Livermore Airport. It's a very gratifying experience for us, and it's certainly a wonderful opportunity for youngsters to learn about career opportunities in aviation. We also provide flight scholarships for those aspiring to become pilots. As you're all probably aware, today, our country is in a critical shortage of aviation professionals, not just pilots, but mechanics, aircraft controllers, maintainers, airport management, and so on. We need to provide our youth with the knowledge of these other aviation career fields and the opportunities that they offer. So in addition to providing career guidance for pilots, the men and women of our Experimental Aircraft Association are in a unique position to offer an aviation STEM learning experience for those interested in those other aviation career fields. Today, our group is made up of numerous scientists, engineers, airplane mechanic technicians, and members experienced in building and restoring aircraft. We have the skills, knowledge, experience, and willingness to support this youth training concept. However, what we don't have is a permanent workspace at the airport where we can house the materials, tooling, equipment necessary to provide the hands-on learning environment for our youth so that they can acquire and utilize the STEM disciplines that are really necessary to become successful in today's workplace. The Airport Community College Hangar Facility is being proposed by Pete Sandu. It provides that workspace that we are needing and an operational airfield making it best-suited for the most effective learning experience. We're looking forward to sharing our knowledge with the youth of Livermore. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jean King, followed by David Fiala, followed by Donna Caban.
Good evening. I hope you can get the volume up higher because it is hard to hear some of the people when they're talking, but I'm noisy, so you can probably hear me. Okay, I am Jean King. I thank the airport manager for his report today. It was very interesting to review the fact that you went through forty-five days of public information. You got input from other people on the former policy. You brought it before the airport commission, and you brought it before the city council. I think you need to do the same thing with this new policy that you are presenting to us tonight. It came to my inbox, my email, at four forty-one this afternoon with all the red changes to it. That was not time enough to review it and see what all is there. If you really want to be transparent and give public input, get public input and give the public what's going on, you need to give people more than an hour and twenty minutes before the meeting starts. No, two hours and twenty minutes, I guess. Okay, so anyway, I ask you not to approve this policy tonight, but to let the citizens have more time to review it and see what is there, to let the city council have more time, let the staff have more time to do it before you approve this policy. It's very important. I know you're not approving a certain development right now, but it's important to have the policy correct and do what it does. Now, the things that I was going to say about this, I know that some of them have been added in. I want to make sure everything that was in the 2010 priorities list is in the list now, is in the policy now. And also, it's very important to add the new things which other people have presented here tonight, too. The leaded fuel is a big issue, and we must try to get rid of the leaded fuel, our children and the adults. Lead is a deadly thing, and it should not be being spewed out over our citizens and the schools. The other thing, of course, is the climate change, and we need to get rid of fossil fuels, as other people before me have spoken. And the PFAS are something that have really come to the forefront these days. There is some reason why 3M had to put up three billion, three billion dollars because of the contamination that's been caused in water with PFAS. And we know that the wells for our valley are right around the airport, and we've got to investigate and see whether those are contaminating our water. I ask that you delay the present airport policy. You study and find out what the priorities are. Report them to our citizens and take input. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is David Fiala, followed by Donna Caban, followed by Van Rany.
My name is David Fiala, and my wife and I live at nineteen forty-seven Ream Drive in Pleasanton. We are thirty-one-year residents. Thank you, Mayor Marshand and council members, for allowing me to speak on the proposed city of Livermore Airport development policy. This is something which affects all of us in the Tri-Valley. When we moved here, the airport was small with small aircraft. In the last twenty years, they flipped the traffic pattern, moving the bulk to Pleasanton. Now, commercial jets are regularly passing over our house, not three per week, but sometimes three per day. We regularly reported noise from those planes operating outside approved business hours via the airport hotline. I have never heard a response, and consequently, I stopped reporting. Our concern is for the safety of our neighborhood, including the impacts of noise, air pollution, and possible accidents. The proposed development policy does not provide clear measurement tools or protocols to address these concerns. The proposed policy is not consistent with the details of the 2010 058 airport resolution and, in fact, contradicts some of the wording. For example, the proposed policy actively solicits a need for expansion rather than responding to a need for expansion. Misinformation abounds regarding the FAA with statements like, "The airport has FAA approval and is a done deal." The fact is, the FAA does want to hear from the public in surrounding areas. Other airports have noise standards and use cleaner burning fuels. Why can't Livermore? I support the concerns voiced in the local independent newspaper, as well as the concerns of the Pleasant City Council regarding the draft airport development policy. Absence of a requirement for public involvement, noise concerns, air pollution from leaded fuel, and lack of confirmation with Resolution 2010 058. We live in the Tri-Valley, and as cities within the Tri-Valley, we regularly work together to create policy for a healthy and prosperous Tri-Valley. Please reevaluate and modify the proposed development policy and take the time to address public concerns and create the measurement tools and standards that can assure that the future development of this local airport has a positive regional impact. Thank you.
Next speaker is Donna Caban, followed by Van Rany, followed by James McSherry.
Good evening, Donna Caban. The draft airport policy still needs major revisions. Some revisions were added by the city of Pleasanton, and I would like to thank the city of Pleasanton. But not all of Pleasanton's revisions were added and included. All provisions from the 2010 resolution need to be added. Further, Livermore residents did not have time to read or comment on last-minute revisions posted at four forty-one p.m. this afternoon. This draft policy needs to go back to the airport commission for another hearing so Livermore and all Tri-Valley residents can review and consider the proposed changes that were hastily presented tonight. What about transparency and public engagement? This policy still moves future development behind closed doors using a staff review team without public hearings. Does the review team violate the Brown Act? There needs to be more transparency for any project that would increase flight activity and impacts. Requiring the public to file a PRA for information is not acceptable. Section 1.2 of the policy must minimize adverse impacts, but the policy does not address new information concerning health hazards and safety. Studies by Santa Clara County and Kaiser Permanente linked the ongoing use of leaded aviation gas with elevated lead exposure in children living near Reed Hillview. elevated lead exposure in children living near Reed Hillview. The CDC says there is no safe blood/lead level in children. This could impact kids in Livermore and Pleasanton schools. Santa Clara County banned the use of leaded AV fuel in 2022. Look at the similarities between Reed Hillview and Livermore. The number of takeoffs and landings in Livermore last year was roughly equivalent to Hillview. So was the number of gallons of leaded AV fuel sold at Livermore last year. Leaded AV fuel is the single largest source of lead emissions. Because of the similarities between Livermore and Reed Hillview, I urge City Council to ban the sale of leaded AV fuel and to apply to become the second FAA demonstration to accelerate the transition to unleaded aviation fuel. Do any of the activities and materials currently used at LVK include PFAS, Gen X, Adana, or their chemical cousins? Could any of these chemicals individually or in combination reach the hazard levels? One, two more sentences. Can a resolution for this draft policy be passed without being codified as a zoning ordinance? In summary, to protect the health and safety of all Tri-Valley residents, this draft policy needs to go back to the Airport Commission for an additional hearing and for public engagement. Thank you.
Next speaker is Van Rennie, followed by James McSherry, followed by Jonathan Kruger.
Council members, thank you for your time again. You know, in looking over the development of this policy, I noticed that a number of comments and changes in relation to the public comment were already being listed, so this doesn't seem like such an immediate change in the policy as presented this afternoon. The other thing that I want to say is that I concur with the need to take unleaded fuel out of aviation gas as much as possible. And the reality is that the people at Livermore Airport are on it. They're moving aggressively since the decisions that heed Reed Hillview have already been established as a precedent for this type of measure. But the one thing I'm worried about is that people looking to suspend or halt development and progress at the airport is being facilitated by people who just don't like, you know, aviation at the airport. And my problem with that is that we need to move forward into the future. These kids with the development of electronic or electric battery-powered aircraft and those that are using hydrogen, that's a significant development. And the Livermore airports on it. They want to build solar farms that can enable the electrolysis of water that is provided by the sanitation department to the reclamation department and use that water to simply produce hydrogen that can be used not only for planes, but for storage for the grid development in off-peak-hour usage. And just having a grid that size would augment the use of, you know, renewable energy. And that hydrogen can be used not just for airplanes, but for Gillig buses that are being developed in the area or the trains that are coming into the area with ValleyLink. There's a number of different uses for that particular brand of fuel, and I greatly encourage those kinds of practices vis-à-vis this policy. So I'm encouraging it to move forward. Just like Governor Newsom says, we're getting to the point in California where we can't do anything because of the obstruction in environmental issues that are raised simply to delay, not for the public benefit. And I think there's a lot of public benefit already wrapped up in this particular policy, and I want to see it go forward as quickly as possible, even if it requires a little bit more review.
Next speaker is James McSherry, followed by Jonathan Kruger, followed by Carol Silva.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, what we have here is a failure to communicate. The reason you are getting the amount of pushback shown here tonight is because of the lack of care for the residents of this city. Our complaints of excessive noise have been almost entirely ignored, and it is completely obvious. Members of the airport management have presented skewed information, claiming few complaints of noise and claim these complaints come from just a few individuals. These same management personnel have presented misleading information about the noise by taking single noise events and averaging them over twenty-four hours. The solution to the matter at hand, however, is a simple one. For years, I have clearly stated that if the city and airport would take responsibility for the most egregious of these offenses and take small steps to rectify them, you might build trust and you wouldn't have the issue raised by the people here tonight. This would not be difficult to accomplish if instead of being secretive about the city's ambitions and claiming to have no authority to mitigate the issues we have, a little creative thinking were to be undertaken. For example, the most annoying pilots, particularly those flying the Pitts Specials based at LVK, where the airport management approached them and asked them to show a little consideration for the neighbors by either using shorter runway, shorter of the two runways, thereby routing their flight paths over the gravel pits and/or staying west of Isabel Avenue while doing their relentless circling of the airport. The number under reported complaints would fall significantly. Or better yet, ask them nicely to fly out over the ample space north and east of Livermore. If the airport management is unwilling to help regulate itself, then why not have the City Council do that? And if it is beyond your limits, how about not renewing their hangar leases as an incentive? The Pitts Special biplane is a stunt plane and has no mufflers whatsoever. They are extremely loud and annoying, similar to the sound of a buzzsaw about ten feet away. If you have not been exposed to the sound, then you can hardly imagine how irritating having them circle overhead for hours of their time can be. Solve this one problem, and most of the concerns here, for the most part, go away. These issues are manageable without disrespecting the residents and with a small amount of effort. Approving the new airport leasing and development policy would be a slap in the face of those who elected you. I urge you to send it back for reconsideration and to include noise mitigation, transition to unleaded fuel, and transparency and inclusion with the residents that are significantly affected by this. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jonathan Kruger, followed by Carol Silva, followed by Sandra Philippe.
So what are three good reasons to reject the proposed airport development policy? Well, number one, it doesn't implement the 2010 Livermore City Council Resolution. Number two, it ignores public comment, and three, it doesn't protect residents. Let's break that down. The policy mentions the City Council Resolution but implements almost nothing it says. The resolution says, "Development will occur only for existing demand based on tangible evidence of same." Try finding that in the policy. It isn't there. The resolution says, "No extending runways, no large cargo operators, and aggressive action to reduce noise." You look at the policy, section after section, where those goals would be relevant, and they're not there. Section 2.9 has twelve different grounds for rejecting a proposal, and not one of them is a goal from the resolution. Public comment, the February policy got more than one hundred public comments. The review was dismissive. Ninety-four times, the response was, "Comment noted." What did the public want? The policy to address noise, provide public engagement, and conform to the resolution. What did we get? In the June policy, noise got two brief mentions, both vague and inconsequential. The policy has more to say about acceptable garbage containers. And number three, the public, the policy doesn't protect residents. It's got no real protection on noise, unleaded fuels, on increased traffic. Yet these things impact our quality of life every day. I understand the airport has needs. Three hundred thousand of us on the ground have needs, too. That's why I join the Livermore Independent and the Pleasanton City Council and ask you to reject this policy and send it back for revision that implements city goals, respects public input, and protects residents. Now, you may think, "Well, the supplemental addresses these issues." Does it? I've seen it for less than ten seconds. There has been zero public review of it. I have no idea to what extent it solves these problems. I think under the circumstances, the only reasonable thing to do is send this out for public review and postpone any decision tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carol Silva, followed by Sandra Philippe, followed by Constance Cops.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm Carol Silva, a Livermore resident who has concerns for all residents in the Tri-Valley area who are impacted by airport activities. The Livermore Airport can be an asset to the community, but it is critical to further evaluate the impacts of airport practices and uses, including the use of leaded fuel, aviation fuel, and jet noise exceeding seventy decibels. There has been studies in 2021 by Santa Clara County and Kaiser Permanente which shows a direct correlation between the lead and the blood of thirteen thousand children living near areas where piston-engine aircraft use leaded aviation fuel. The level of lead and blood of children living near Reed Hillview Airport was similar to the lead, level of lead in the blood of children in Flint, Michigan. The air traffic at Reed Hillview Airport is similar to Livermore's airport. What parallels can the city draw between the use of leaded fuel at Reed Hillview and Livermore's airport and the level of lead in the blood of children living near these airports? Please do not approve the airport's draft leasing and development policy tonight and send it back to the Airport Commission to incorporate environmental revisions and suggestions made by the public and hold another hearing. Please do what is right for this generation, for many future generations of Tri-Valley area residents and visitors, and for our children who live near the airport. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sandra Philippe, followed by Constance Cops, followed by Pete Sandu.
I am by no means a public speaker. Just a grandmother with three granddaughters. I'm a lifelong Tri-Valley resident, ten years in Livermore. Ten years ago, the planes were very, very minimal. I love the planes personally, the small planes, the quieter planes, not the one that goes around for forty-five minutes, round and round and round. But I think my bigger concern is the fact that things are always pushed under the carpet. We, as citizens, don't seem to get enough warning, enough advance, enough help to try to counteract some of these things that are being pushed through. Even when the runway was extended so that more jets could come in, years ago, when we first got there, it was done under the guise of, "Well, we just need to do some repair." Those sort of things worry me. The lead fuel worries me very, very much so. Being a grandmother and having children that can attend those schools and those preschools with those planes flying over them on a daily basis concerns me very, very much so. The noise, all the neighbors laughed at us when we said we were going to call the hotline because they just said that nobody takes any account of it. They don't care. And when you do it year after year and try to complain about the noise and you know nothing's being done and it's put down on a piece of paper that nobody cares about, you just give up. I'm just like the rest of the neighbors. I've given up. But I came here tonight because I don't want to be that voice that complains and doesn't do anything. I listen to all these people around me at my home and hear them complain, but they're not willing to do anything. So I would like you to try to consider the sixty-six acres with the solar panels. That'd be great for everybody. Send it back and let people have the chance to look over it more. Thank you.
Next speaker is Constance Cops, followed by Pete Sandu, followed by Doug Mann.
Hi, I'm here because I read in the Independent that there was a lot of lead in the fuel, and I live in an area where on the premises, a bunch of airport dirt, a big mound of it, was developmentally dumped. I was told by someone when I called the city, and that concerns me, and I want you to check into that. I know that's another issue. I think, though, tonight you should really take seriously the comments, you know, that were just made by Carol, Jean, and Jim, and John, and like all these people that do have concerns. I know the airport's a big cash cow for the city. We make, you make a lot of money. We make a lot of money from it. But where is the balance? You know, you have to figure out, there are other people here. I know it's tough, and I don't want to go on because I didn't study the issues. I didn't have time. I was reading up on other issues I was concerned about the city. So giving people enough time to actually, even yourselves, time to actually consider all that you should. It takes time sometimes, so please take your speakers very seriously, especially when it really does involve children's health. Thanks.
Next speaker is Pete Sandu, followed by Doug Mann, followed by Bob Tuckner.
Good evening. My name is Pete Sandu, and I want to talk a little bit about unintended consequences. One, when reviewing any new policy, we've got to consider what problem we're trying to solve. And the policy, as it's written, may draw out the permitting process of new projects, and these potential delays may pose hurdles to all but the most persistent developers. If your intention is to draw out the developers with the deepest pockets, you may not get the kind of development that you're looking for. I've spoken to each one of you about a community-oriented plan at the airport. A plan, and I've talked to many people in the audience that are that are familiar with it as well. A plan that includes Los Pacitas College, educating students for high-paying careers where students that grow up in the Tri-Valley can afford to live in the Tri-Valley. It includes nonprofit youth groups, like you've heard about. It includes unleaded fuels. It includes solar panels. It includes a quiet and clean electric aircraft and the solar panels to power them, all produced with green energy at the airport. It includes hydrogen production from the solar panels and from the sanitary district, from the effluent that would otherwise be dumped into the San Francisco Bay. Yeah, and producing hydrogen to power these airplanes, to power the Gillig buses, to power trucks and cars and trains. So every detail in the plan includes something that's community-oriented and community-friendly and provides resources and capabilities to the community that benefit the community. If the city decides to extend the moratorium to go review this policy or to make the policy more onerous, we'll most likely have a project that is less community-oriented. A development of education, nonprofits, youth programs, solar panels just can't compete with the economics of Boeings and big jets. We need to support the projects that we're looking to attract and figure out ways to attract the kinds of projects that are good for this city. There's no better place on the planet to showcase the future of clean energy and aviation than right here in Livermore. Thank you.
Next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Bob Tuckner, followed by Robin Tesslitch.
Good evening, Council. I, you know, would like to concur with what Jean King had to say. Jim McSherry had a lot of sympathy for what he had to say. I mean, he lives over there. I mean, he lives over there. And the grandmother just spoke. Your people are hurting. Your residents are hurting, and they want you to care about their needs. And they're making that clear today. One thing that came up, just to transition a little bit earlier in, in this item, it was mentioned that it was hard to hear in the back, and it is hard to hear in the back. And I would just offer my opinion that it doesn't have anything, the sound system can do what it needs to do. It just isn't being operated as well as it could be. And I think it might be that your staff might need a little bit of training. And I, you know, my credentials, I will offer free of charge, a little help to keep some of these audio and visual things from, from going wrong, that often go wrong here. But back to the, to the item, yes, very short notice, too short. Please don't take any action on this today. This should be an ordinance. This has risen beyond what a policy really can, can deal with. And I would like to ask first, first of all, that, yeah, it be elevated to an ordinance. When I have been thinking about this issue over the past week, for me, it really comes back to a basic thing that we all learned in kindergarten. Be kind to your neighbors. Pleasanton has been talking about this and asking, you know, when you, when you do something and you're, you're doing something that bothers somebody else, a lot of times you don't know it. And I think our airport, we've just gone along like that's our airport and this is what we do, and we pay attention to it from our point of view. But when it's pointed out to you that what you're doing is bothering somebody, the thing to do is give them some attention and some respect. And I'd like to, yes, this needs to open up to a wider audience and, and Pleasanton should have seats on the, on the commission, frankly. It really affects them. With regard to leaded fuel, I don't know how many resident pilots we have that use leaded fuel. I know there are some, but I don't know if it's five or 100. I'd like a list of all the resident pilots that want to continue to use leaded fuel so that we can engage them. I'd like to talk to them and see what their challenge is. Some of us remember when lead was taken out of auto fuel, and there were all kinds of stories about how all these cars weren't going to be able to be driven anymore. I think we accommodated that fine, and I don't think any cars got obsolete. They, the old cars still run, so there's got to be a way to do it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Tucknot, followed by Robin Tesslich, followed by Zoom speaker, Pernam Sheth.
Wow, you don't know what a great asset we have with the Livermore Airport out in this valley. I've been flying 50 plus years. I've been in a lot of airports. I've been attending at the Oakland, Port Oakland Airport, Hayward and Livermore. Livermore is the greatest, and we have interest from some really great benefits that would come to this valley. Cal Fire would like to locate here. We could sure use those when we have the fire season going on. East Bay Regional would like to get their helicopter out of Hayward on this side because we have so much better weather on this side of the hill than that side, and they can fly more. Same thing goes for the CHP in Napa. And Pete mentioned the training. Who do you think trains the pilots? It used to be the military. The military used to train the mechanics, the avionics people, and the pilots. You're not getting that training anymore. The military has cut way back on it. They're looking at drones and other ways of engaging our enemies. But we train the pilots right out there at Livermore. And if you don't have pilots, some of you aren't going to go on your vacations to Europe if we don't have pilots driving those airplanes. And they get trained right here in Livermore, believe it or not. So when they talk about these airplanes going around in circles, they're actually training. And you want safe pilots, you want pilots that are competent. And also, we need good avionics people for the aviation, avionics, as well as mechanics. All these people can be trained here in Los Pacitas College wants to do it. The fourth thought of a lot of people at the, in law enforcement put in, I don't know if you even know it, we have a sheriff's substation located right at the Livermore Airport. We have patrols going out of there, fixed wing as well as helicopter. And we've got two fixed wing and one helicopter, supported by the, of all volunteer sheriff's air squadron, which I'm a member of. And I do a lot of public benefit flying. 90% of my flying is public benefit. I've flown angel flights for 35 years, taking kids that need cancer treatments to urban areas for advanced treatment and back home. And we do a lot of them now, more and more out of Livermore Airport. And without these airports, there's no way to get people from A to B in these small rural communities into urban areas. The Keldarts Organization, I happen to represent that with the Sheriff's Department. Keldarts is a California Disaster Air Relief Team, and this team is getting trained up and down the state. We have exercises in order to supply food, medical, whatever is needed when the big one hits. And it's well organized, and these are all volunteer pilots, and most of them are flying out of Livermore. I'm all done with my time, I see. So I, I support good policy. I support public benefit flying, and that's all I've done most of my life, and I appreciate everybody's concerns. We've got an asset here, great one.
Next speaker is Robin Tesslich, followed by Zoom speaker, Pernam Sheth, followed by Ron Basket.
Good evening. How are you? So I'm a Livermore resident. I live actually near the airport and under one of the flight paths and have for the last decade. I'm also the Vice President of our local EAA chapter that you've heard about, which is our, our charity organization. And the reason that I joined was with a goal of expanding our youth program. You've heard from a couple of the youth here today. We have a three-pronged approach of providing intro flights to youth who may be interested in careers in aviation. We provide the opportunity for them to learn how to build an aircraft, which is giving them all sorts of exposure to STEM related activities, math, aeronautical engineering, basic skills like riveting. And then we also, in the last two years, have given out multiple scholarships to help those who cannot afford it to pursue their private pilot license and continue with their aviation dreams. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said tonight, but I guess what I would like to echo is that I think our airport is an asset to the community. I think we can do more with the right policy for growth. I think a lot of what Pete Sandu's ideas have put forward are very good. And in particular, what we could do for the youth is support the activities that are going to provide us some facilities so that we can have a place to build and expand, expand our building area for, for airplanes, and also give us better places to meet and grow our youth activities. This, this community is all about technology and technology careers. We have a lot of youth who are interested, and we just need the capacity and the capability and the place to support their, their dreams and their goals. All of these people will become our next generation of commercial airline pilots, our next generation of metaflight pilots, and our next generation of firefighting pilots. So everyone in this room and everybody in this community will develop, will benefit from developing pilots and youth who are interested in aviation careers from our community. And one last note, there's been a lot of talk about the lead and the fuel. Everybody wants to remove lead from aviation fuel, and I think Pete's proposal, Pete Sandu's proposal includes some movement towards that. Banning lead fuel from, from Livermore for sale will not eliminate the pilots flying over your houses with lead in their gas tanks because they will go someplace else and buy it because they have to. It's a process that we're going through. We have to get our airplanes certified to use the fuel. We have to get the fuel onsite, and then we can move in that direction of eliminating it completely. Right now, it's probably increasing because the pilots from Reed Hillview come to Livermore to buy gas because they can't get it where they need it at home. So I would encourage you to consider the impacts of any policy and hopefully take event of supporting the community and youth activities and the things that would really take advantage of this great asset that we have in Livermore, our airport. And be mindful of the safe way to go about implementing any additional safety features like removal of lead from sale or for sale at Livermore Airport. Thank you.
Next speaker is over Zoom, Pernam Sheth, followed by Ron Basket, followed by Zoom user. Pernam Sheth, you've been unmuted. Pernam Sheth, please unmute yourself. Pernam Sheth? Go to the next speaker, and we can come back to Mr. Sheth. Next speaker is Ron Basket. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, I am Ronald Basket, a 40-year resident of Pleasanton and a professional air quality meteorologist. I'm a member of the Tri Valley Air Quality Climate Alliance, and our group is funded by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to assist local government and ensuring a long-term air quality of the Tri Valley. But my comments today are just my own view. So having read the policy document, I recommend that the language be made much stronger regarding giving the highest priority to projects that will place leaded aviation gas with unleaded and reduce or eliminate diesel and PFAS emissions from airport operations as soon as practical. So we've heard before, this is basically emphasizing and reinforcing from a technical viewpoint that, that lead has a significant impact on children's health at extremely low levels. Possibly conducting a brief study in the vicinity of LCP would be warranted to look at lead levels. We know that lead actually is emitted in its highest concentration during ground operations, right on the runway. PFAS emissions are known to contaminate soil and groundwater and need to be eliminated from airport operations. Our study in collaboration with the Air District has shown that 68% of the cancer risk in the Tri Valley is due to diesel emissions. The District has developed a program and implemented it to be diesel-free by 2023. We encourage each step towards that to remove diesel in any operation such as backup generators. We, I, mother, promote the high priority of proposals presented by Five Rivers Aviation to build a new unleaded fuel supply system within the next two years and to complete the solar hydrogen project. Thank you.
Going to call Pernam Sheth again? Mr. Sheth, you are unmuted. I believe Mr. Sheth is experiencing some technical difficulties. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom user. Zoom user, please unmute yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Michael Ferrucci, 508 South Livermore Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here just, I want to urge you to reject the current policy modifications. I don't live in the flight path or under the flight path, but I have many friends that do. Actually, Jim McSherry, who spoke previous, I understand precisely what he's talking about because I have been at his residence while planes have been very low to the ground and circling. Training or not, it, in my opinion, is very inconsiderate of the residents that live there. I need more time to consider the impacts on, on the noise and health, and I urge you to reject the, the current policy modifications. I also concur with previous speakers, Don Acaban, as well as Gene King, Doug Mann. I think it's overwhelming that you should consider what the speakers are urging you to do, and that would give the residents of Livermore more time to consider what they should suggest. Thank you very much. Good night.
Next speaker is Sunil Hariani. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Sunil. Thank you for giving me the time. I live in Pleasanton. The flights regularly go over my house. They regularly go over the school my, my children attend. And I heard a previous speaker say the airport's on it. I'm not sure what they're on because we've complained about the fact that these planes don't follow the voluntary guidelines. The airport doesn't take any proactive steps to stop it. They have the radar so they can see who does it, but they don't proactively do it. They require us to complain. They note that, and that's the end of the matter. So I reject, I encourage you to reject the policy or at least allow more time for comment for all the reasons previously given. The policy is inconsistent with the 2010 resolution. There are numerous environmental issues, and the policy was rushed through without adequate notice. I would like to address a couple of points I've heard other speakers make. I heard one speaker say, we need to support development. Well, funnily enough, we were told there was no specific development under consideration that, oh, this is some generic policy, and that came straight from the City Council, an email I have. And that, I think, gets to the biggest problem, that this process has been intentionally opaque, that the policy's getting rushed through, and we're told there is nothing specific, but clearly there is something specific under consideration. I haven't seen what came out today. I'm on vacation, and I'm dialing in for this. I heard another comment that the airport is an asset, and that's great. It's an asset, but that's irrelevant to the fact that the process was flawed and that none of the concerns raised by all the residents have been addressed. As a previous speaker said, he just said, comment noted. Well, go back, make this policy better, address the comments, and that, the airport will still be an asset, and it can support everything everybody wants. Let's take the time to make sure it's done correctly. Thank you.
And we're going to try Pernam Sheth one more time. Mr. Sheth, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there are times charm. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Look, the airport, you know, is an asset for the community. It is also a city asset that impacts, I don't know, 100,000, 300,000 people. And it has a major impact in the, in the future and our lives here in the, in the, in the Tri Valley. Right? We understand that noise seems to be one of the major issues. And I think a lot of it has to do with, as one speaker said, the airport management has, to be clear, misled you and the public in terms of what they can do about noise. We understand that the FAA sets a set of standards on noise. It's about an average of 65 decibels over a 24-hour period, and it was set for an urban area, not a regional airport that we have. So the question is, what can the airport do about noise? The current proposal does nothing. It just refers to the 2010 resolution. Mayor Marchand, you approved it, and it gives you guidance. You're giving guidance to city staff, but the city staff had not nothing to actually implement it in policy. What could they do? Well, you can do much more aggressive in the policy. You could add much more aggressive education for tenants. The policy could say, hey, all tenants and leases need to attend a yearly training on, on flight paths and noise mitigation. The tenants could, for example, write, you know, join a pledge, written acknowledgement on the voluntary curfew and suggested flight paths, of course, keeping it safe. They could sign that pledge. You know, if a tenant violates the voluntary policy, airport management has actually all the flight paths, and they know exactly who has gone at night. They could go and talk to them. Right? They could actually say after three times, hey, the mayor, maybe Mr. Marchand or Mayor Marchand, you can go have a talk with them, say, this is how much it impacts the public, how it impacts your citizens. We could add things like all tenants need to have a four by six or 16 by 20, you know, visible placard in every, every hangar and every facility to give those mitigation recommendations. Right? But here's the thing, the airport management has chosen not to do any of those things. They've gone with, "The FAA says we can't do anything. It would be discriminatory, et cetera, et cetera." Well, the FAA hasn't said, "You can't go talk to people." Right? The second most important thing is that there is no public notification, comment, and transparency. Almost all communications and documents have been effectively made NDA and confidential. We saw that with Kaiser. There are no public documents that were available. So I urge you to make this a very public and transparent piece. The last comment, I think you need to make sure there is oversight on top of the airport management. This is very important. They've proven, you know, "Comment noted, no deletion, no ad addition." That's the exact case. This was not done in good faith. Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final speaker.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Any questions from the council for starters? Any questions for staff? Questions first, if there's any questions. Councilmember Carling.
So we had several people talk about hydrogen fuel and solar panels and so on and so forth. Is there anything in the policy that prohibits Mr. Santu or anybody associated with him to make a proposal for, to develop any of those particular items?
No. There is no restriction in type of fuels to be developed in the policy.
Okay, so there was another point made about development, as if there's anything that's currently being proposed for development there. Is there anything currently proposed for development?
The airport has received no formal development plan, no, or proposal, I should say.
And if somebody did propose a development there, would it come before city council?
If this were to be approved and the policy would be, the policy would be evaluated as per the appendices in here or unsolicited or solicited proposals. It's laid right out in the appendix how the process would work.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I guess, there was also comment made, "Did we ever get an application from Kaiser for a development?"
This is Scott Lamp, your Public Works Director. No, we never received a completed and accepted application from Kaiser. It was partially submitted.
Right, but nothing to the quality that we needed for even consideration, right?
No.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions at the moment.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for staff. Make sure I got my notes right. So first question I had is, there was a lot of reference to the 2010-058, whether it's still applied, whether it is implemented. I believe there's some wording in there, but can staff speak to, does the 2010 resolution still apply for future developments? How would it affect the approval process for future development?
Yeah, sure. So the 2010 resolution lays out seven points of how the airport will be, how proposals will be evaluated, restrictions that will not be allowed at the airport, so on and so forth. That resolution is contained, once again, as an appendix to the proposed policy. Further, in the revision that was provided today, and I realize it was provided this afternoon, each of those, excuse me, each of those points in the resolution are specifically laid out in the revised policy. Because there were some public comments that the 2010 resolution was not being specifically adhered to in the specific portions of the policy. Therefore, we took each of those restrictions and each of those parts of the resolution and placed them into the specific sections of the policy.
So just to clarify then, the majority of the changes that we see in Section 1.2 are primarily pulling from policy that was already in place in the proposed policy, but was a reference to the 2010 resolution. And instead of just leaving it as a reference to the 2010 resolution, we explicitly spelled them out in the redline section. Is that, I know there's a couple of other little tweaks, but that's the majority of the changes in 1.2. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you on that. And then I had a question about, two questions about the process. One, I think, might be an oversight, but I'd like to hear from staff, which is that for city-initiated projects, the airport commission isn't consulted in the flow chart. I believe they're supposed to be, and I think that might just be an omission. Is it correct that the airport commission would be consulted before any city-initiated plans came to planning or city council?
The airport commission is consulted after the policy, after the proposed policy is reviewed by the interdepartmental staff review. So subsequent to that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I think it's missing in the flow chart, I believe. I might have overlooked it for city-initiated items.
Okay, I'll double-check that.
Yeah, just to check on, to make sure that's clear. And then I have a question about, let me think, cut up phrases. So every item in the, every development that would be proposed, of which there are none currently, but should this policy pass and a development was proposed, every decision, every development that goes through would have to come before city council. Is that correct?
If the resulting project, if it results in a lease that we have to interact with somebody, which would be all of the major projects, then yes, it would come before council.
Yeah, and with that, when it comes before council, we would not be in our quasi-judicial role. We would actually be able to reference the policy. And if the public did not like the project, if it did not conform to our goals, we would be able to reject that project.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I want to make sure, just, I'm just checking to make sure that I have this all correct, but just to make sure it's clear that if this policy goes through, before this policy was proposed, we didn't have a clear policy for how to develop the airport. And so a project, when proposed, would go through, basically, the planning department. And if it met the bare minimum standards, we would almost be forced to develop it in the, prior to this policy. And now, with this policy, it gives city council, as well as the planning commission and the airport commission, opportunities to reject policies or reject proposed developments at the airport.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's clear and that I understood it properly before moving forward. I have other comments, but leave it at there.
Councilmember Verian, do you have questions?
Yes. Is unleaded fuel offered right now at the airport?
No, it is not for sale at the airport.
How can we speed that process up so let planes who want to commit for unleaded fuel can get it? Is there anything special that's holding it up? Do we need to get a tanker over there or what?
It's just being able to get the unleaded fuel from the provider. It's just in short supply right now.
Okay.
But we'll make every effort to work with the FBO, who's the fuel provider, to make sure that they have it.
I think a gentleman here would probably get that unleaded fuel over there quick. The other thing is, would it be bad to add to, one person doubling one person for Pleasanton to be on the commission? Maybe not as a voting member or as ad hoc, or they can put in their, at least their opinion from the two cities, especially Pleasanton, because the majority of complaints come from the Pleasanton area. So I think they should have someone on that commission that has a voice, can say something. Can we do something like that?
Councilmember Verian, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcoa. Are you pointing out to the policy itself? Or are you speaking to the airport commission as an advisory?
Airport commission.
Okay. That's a separate item. That's not before each day, but I think if you wanted to entertain and discuss, speak to it, you think you can, but it would have to come back at each day.
Well, I think just to follow up on the city attorney's comment, it really is a policy decision. I mean, staff can offer our opinion. It is the city's asset. And there's an airport commission that is established by the city with very specific membership, but ultimately, it's a policy decision that, you know, could be made by the council at the future meeting. And also, very quickly, council member Verian, just to clarify, mostly for members of the public, city does not provide fuel at the airport. That is why we have a contract with the fixed-based operator, FBO Five Rivers. Mr. Sandhu just spoke on behalf of that company. They provide fuel at the airport, and the city will be working with them to explore the possibility of providing unleaded fuel at the airport.
Well, I've only known you for a little while, but I know you can make things happen. So let's see what a woman can do over there. And, you know, I have a lot of comments about it, and I've been thinking about it, and one person said they give up. Don't give up, you know? That's not the American way. We don't give up. Just push hard. And so I know there's a lot of pros and cons on that, and when there's airports, it is an asset. It's an important part of our Livermore. And I know, Pete Sandhu, I went to his place, and he gave me all the ideas that he has, and he's got a lot of great ideas. And sometimes he's pushing the envelope into the future, but I think that's where we ought to go as quick as we can. We keep saying we're the technology hub, so let's grab a hold of it and go with it. So one more thing. So one of the things that people complain, I heard the most, is that we're kind of doing things in the background, you know, that no one knows. And some of it is our fault, that we should put out all the information, not be afraid of getting comments and getting slapped down by the public, because they're the ones that pay the taxes. They're the ones that we represent. And they should be more transparent. And I've been hearing comments about this new interdepartment staff review team, or like everybody likes acronym, the IDSRT, which I'll forget so quickly. And they're afraid that things will go to them, and the commission won't have a chance to see what's coming up or it's too late. And maybe it's my fault, but sometimes some of the stuff comes up to me, and I don't even know what's going on yet. And so I hear from the community and the people. And I think we have good leaders here, John, and all, that we care. We want to do what we can, the best way we can for the city, and not destroy things on the way there. And I, you know, I would support pushing this policy at least a week to the next meeting and give the chance for more review and come back with real solid answers on some of the things that the community came up with. And I don't think it'll hurt us if we go just one more meeting, and then we get a little bit and do what we need to do and try to satisfy some of them. I know we can't satisfy everybody. We're not going to do that. And so maybe come back with some better ideas that will satisfy the people here. And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. I still have a few questions, if I may. So somebody spoke about, well, why doesn't the airport change the flight paths so it doesn't go over houses? It's my understanding that the FAA sets the flight paths over LVK. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so the city doesn't do that. It's the FAA.
The FAA does, yes.
Okay. And regarding the perfluoroalkyl substances, the PFAS, at the airport, those were mandated by the FAA that we had the fire retardant foams at the airport.
At one time, it was, yes.
Yeah, at one time they were. I don't recall them ever having been used. Of course, there's a couple of other places where there are suggestions. For example, the fire training tower in Pleasanton has used PFOS as well. So they're still trying to find the actual source of the groundwater contamination in Pleasanton. With regards to, Councilmember Carling mentioned this, but Kaiser never presented a proposal to the city. And I think this is one of the things where we, things got crossways, is that the, a member of the airport brought the Kaiser presentation to the airport commission. And then the airport commission thought that that sounded like a good idea. But then suddenly, that got translated that the city approved it. And I think this is one of the advantages of having this IDSRT, is that you actually have staff, a team created to vet these proposals before it ever gets daylighted. So this is what happened with Kaiser, is it was put before the airport commission, and then this idea got out into the community that the city had passed this. And it never did. We never considered this, but it just ran away with it. So I think having, and there was a comment about, would this violate the Brown Act? And absolutely not, because the members of the IDSRT are not elected officials. They're staff members. So it would not violate the Brown Act. So that shouldn't be a concern. We heard people commenting about, well, there was no chance for public input. Well, this was back in March. One of the speakers also said that this is summertime, so people are on vacation. But we took public comment, I believe it was March 4th to April 24th, I think it was.
Forty-five day period.
That's correct. Forty-five days. So there was ample opportunity to provide public input. Livermore is a small municipal airport, and people talked about how it's just, we're just small planes. I believe 10 years ago, we had six jets residing at Livermore. How many do we have today? I'll answer the question for you. It's six.
Okay.
So this idea that we're going to turn to a jet port, that never happened. So concerns about the current resolution has been ignored. Point number four, the city does not intend to extend the existing runways, period. One of the speakers said that the runway was extended. I've been here for 35 years, and I don't ever recall either runway being extended. There's been a lot of talk. But to my knowledge, neither runway has been extended. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Again, there's so much information going back and forth, and people say, "I read it on the internet, so it's got to be true." That's what Abraham Lincoln said, right? Don't believe everything you read on the internet. So so another question, a lot of people are concerned about if there is development, for example, if they add hangars at the airport, will the number of operations increase? And in 2007, we had 180,000 operations. In 2015, we had 117,000 operations. We had the same number of hangars. And we still have the same number of hangars today. So that's not necessarily proportional.
There's no clear metric paralleling the two, the growth of hangars and the number of flights.
Right, so we're looking to identify existing demand. And one of the under-function, plus, I think I'm moving into comments at this point. Let me just check, make sure I got my questions answered. Oh, yeah, with fuel, leaded fuel, I mean, and as a water quality chemist, we tested water for lead every single week. So the Center for Environmental Health actually did a, they quantified a lot of these lead risk hazards. And they did quantify that the lead in the avgas was a concern. What was interesting was looking at their chart, the incidence of lead What was interesting was looking at their chart, uh, the incidence of lead. Proximate to uh, state highways was actually greater. It was three times the incidence of, of being near the airport and it was five times that of being near uh, a railroad. Uh, I'm sure the railroad is five times the hazard of, of being near the airport. Um. Everybody in this room has brass faucets. Brass faucets are eight percent lead. So uh, we live with these, these, and we try to mitigate them as best we can. Uh, so yes, we did stop selling lead faucets a number of years ago, but we still have them. Uh, and I don't see everybody's, you know, torn them out of their houses yet. Uh, so. I see that we uh. Looking at this, uh, I, I see that we do have a, a lot of the uh, resolution from two thousand and ten. Uh, that has been included in this. We had taken public comment. Um, with that, uh, I'll open it up for comments.
I got one more question, well, a couple more.
Go for it.
Okay. Uh. What do we do? Uh, is there a way to? Castigate, punish, shame, a socket where people violate the noise or the, they come in and fly at the wrong time. Instead to slap man, nothing. Slingshots or anything, nothing, can't do anything.
What we currently do is uh, for each and every uh, flight that does operate during the curfew hours of. Ten P M to six A M, uh, they receive a letter from us indicating the, the flight time, they, they. The, the end number of the airplane and uh, reminding them of the curfew hours and uh, requesting that they. Uh, refrain from, from doing those flights during those hours.
So what we needed to find a way to. Punish them. I taught. Junior high, if I didn't, if I let kids get away with rules they break. I'd go nuts in my classroom. So I'm thinking the same way. You got a bunch of students out there with planes and some might be millionaires with their big jet planes. But we still gotta come through with a policy that says, okay, you can't chew gum. Don't do it. So what, you know, I punished them and they didn't chew gum after a while. So uh, we gotta do. You know, I think they have the power to find a way to. You know, fine them or something, you know, okay, you'll be fined fifty dollars and this money is gonna go to uh, support. Pete Sandu's new school, Los Vasitas. You're gonna help build that school. You know, something, you know, we feed on a freeway, you caught, you get a ticket. I know some people are rich and they don't care paying the ticket, but no care, they take more money from them.
Councilman Barianos, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. Councilman Barianos, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala, dealing with how to respond to these complaints as. Airport manager Michael Muska explained that our city does send letters. It is possible, you mentioned the issue of shaming. Which is to make those publicly available. Those are publicly available. Those are um, available to public records request. One thing that is available to the city and other agencies have explored this, which is broadcasting that. Making a situation where someone can see, uh, as you said, the stockade, a, a title list, which is here's people who have violated. So that could be more transparent to the community. That is one opportunity. Just to expand a bit on that, uh, on customer variantos point. Are there sticks and carrots that, that we are allowed to use? Uh, for example, uh, you know, he mentioned fines. Uh, are there mechanisms that we can use to discourage people from uh? Excursions on the curfew?
On that note, uh, Mayor Mashawn, again, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. That is more challenging. We've looked into that in the past. We have not found an effective way to do that. Um, we can continue to explore that. The shaming one, as far as identifying the violators and making it publicly available, that is definitely within your purview.
Okay. And also another question, uh, can the city of Livermore unilaterally stop the fuel uh, sales uh, for leaded gasoline?
Well, the county of Santa, Santa Clara County has done that. Um, it's being challenged by the FAA. Uh, so. Would be in the purview of the city or the county?
Well, but uh, but then again, the county also operates the health department. That's when they initiated that, that study. We don't have a health department that we operate. That, that also goes under Alameda County. Uh, but if. Uh, if someone, i- if we were to stop, uh, or for example, in Reed Hillview, uh, they've stopped. Leaded fuel sales. Is there anything to prevent somebody from flying to a neighboring airport outside of the county? And then flying back in. If, for example, if Livermore were to uh, ban fuel sales, uh, someone could fly to Byron or Tracy or Hayward. Uh, there'd be no way to prevent them from flying back into Livermore.
That is a correct scenario. There's no, there's no way for us to tell who is buying their fuel where and from whom.
So Reed Hillview may have stopped the fuel sales of leaded uh, gasoline or leaded avgas, but. Planes are still flying into Reed Hillview uh, with leaded fuel. Okay, alright. So there has to be a coordinated effort with the FAA and the EPA. And I believe that's what's happening down in, in Reed, in Santa Clara, is there's actually now, no pun intended, there's a pilot study. Uh, going on where they're looking at the uh, um. Effective of stopping the fuel sales. Okay, but that's something that, that's not on the table for us tonight.
No, it's not.
Okay. Alright. Very good. Um, again. Any more comments?
Yeah. I appreciate it, Michael. Okay, I know you go, you're under the gun right now, but I appreciate your effort and your work and. And uh, hopefully you'll get some of these ideas and you push them through in, in that commission. And I, I've been to your commission meetings and they're interesting. And I just say once now, so I can't say anything there, but I will try to show up once, once I stay high. Not stop my foot or anything if I see something going wrong, but I like to come in and be commissioned because I want to know who's there. And what you do and how you react to things, but you know, that's just for my information from my, you know. I want to encompass everything that goes on and how you guys react and do your work. And I do appreciate your work. It's all, you know, a real high paying job over there. So, uh, again, thank you.
Thank you. We have a great staff.
Okay, on to comments. Customer branding.
Thank you. Uh. So I have a few, actually I have several comments, but uh, before I get started. I want everyone in the audience to know that I hear you loud and clear, uh, along the way in this process, I got confused at different points as well. I. Had some trouble following along as things were changing. I know it's an evolving process and you hear things online, you know, I've. Frequently on Nextdoor and Facebook and all of the social media, trying to see what's happening in the city. Uh. You hear information that's accurate, you hear information that's inaccurate, you get the whole lot of it and it becomes really confusing. Uh. The comments that people provided and I received quite a number of comments on this. Uh, helped me a lot. And so I really appreciate that. Uh. Helped me understand what the issues were, helped me understand what uh, the benefits were, helped me understand the whole process. And I really, I really sympathize with the issues. I do not enjoy airport noise. Uh. I want us to be able to do what we can and it is limited what we can do, but I want to be able to do what we can to limit airport noise. Uh, I'm. I really want to get rid of leaded fuel. And the problem with banning it at our airport. Uh, and I would, you know, if I'm incorrect with this, please correct me, but the problem with banning it at our airport. Is if anyone wants to take off our land, they now need twice as much leaded fuel in their plane, weighing them down even more. So they're going to be heavier coming in and heavier going out because they need enough fuel to get back to somewhere they can fuel up. And so it actually would likely lead to an increase in lead levels right now. So we do need a regional thing. Uh, we thankfully have a FBO operator who has been very vocal about environmental concerns. And I think the staff can work with our FBO operator to make sure that we phase out leaded gas as quickly as possible. That we can include contract stipulations, potentially for a certain percentage of gas sold that needs to be unleaded. I don't know that this is the vehicle with the development policy to have that specific wording in here. That's a contract between the FBO. And the city, uh, but I do think the development agreement says that we're going to take the steps we can. As a bit of good news, the state has put forth uh, and passed a new law saying by twenty thirty. All airports in the state need to move away from leaded fuel. Uh, so by twenty thirty. We will see back on. I think that data is too far out. I don't want us to wait. Uh, seven years, I suppose. So I strongly encourage uh, our FBO operations, um, and the city to work out. Some path to do this quicker. Uh. If we can offer unleaded fuel, if there's alternatives. You know, it won't solve the problem until we have that twenty thirty rule going and every airport is on the same page, but it can help a lot. If we have planes taking off with unleaded fuel, it will help. So absolutely on that front. As far as noise. Any advocacy we can do, uh, I encourage us continuing to work with the FAA to try to get. You know, our curfew to be an actual enforceable curfew, uh, whatever we can do, you know, lobby. Congress, I, I don't know the mechanisms, the FAA won't let us currently. But I don't think that means we stop trying and I think it's important that we let our representatives know. For an airport like ours, a mandatory curfew, you know, for non-emergency issues would be great. As far as the development policy goes, uh. So here's my concern and was my concern all along. And it really gave me a lot of pause. Uh, when I was going through this. I had spoken with staff and I was considering sending this back to them for revision. Uh, I had spoken about, you know. The problems that I saw in it. I do think some of the revisions really helped with that clarity from staff has helped me understand better. But my overall concern was that we were going to end up in a situation. Where we were forced to build something we didn't want to build. And that the community wouldn't be brought in on the process, that we would. Be left wondering how we got here. And once we were there, it would be too late to have an off ramp. And if you look at the flow chart, if you look at, read through the document. There are, I think. I should have counted specifically, but there's five or six different times where the city can reject a proposal. And the final time would be at a public meeting such as this, where people can come forward and say. You know, this is not what we want. But you would have that opportunity multiple times before that to make your voices heard. There would be public outreach. Uh. It would be in your hands to help control the growth of the airport, uh, to develop the undeveloped land. I think we have a lot of opportunities to do some things that are really great for the community. And I know it's scary when you hear about airport development. But the first thing that comes to people's minds is bigger jets, louder jets, more hangars. We don't know what we will develop yet. But I will tell you now that the rules that we are laying out say that we are not looking for bigger jets. We are not looking to make more noise. We are going to do what we can. To make sure that we have good tenants. And so with all of that said. It took me a while to get here and. I am in support of the policy. I do think there is one change I want to see in it and I'll get to that, but. I want the people who are listening to know that while I'm in support of it, it's because I truly believe that the alternate is far worse. And the alternate of going back leaves us open to projects that we don't want. Going into the airport where we wouldn't be able to defend ourselves and we wouldn't have these off ramps. And we wouldn't have the opportunities for the council to stop them, for the planning commission, airport commission staff to stop them. That we would end up with projects going into the airport. That are simply things that would upset all of you. That would upset me, that would leave us feeling powerless and leave us feeling lost. With this policy. We, and I mean collectively, everyone in this room has control over what will be developed at the airport. And so I want to suggest to my neighbors on council some additional wording. Uh, I'll turn to staff and our legal counsel to potentially tighten up this wording if it needs to be. But under one point two in our goals, and I believe the goals repeat in seven point five. Uh, and possibly in the rejection criteria, I think adding a sixth criteria. Uh, which would be something, again, the wording, I want this to be legally justifiable, so. Please correct what needs to, but the wording of something along the lines of having a section for compatibility. And the development policy will discourage development inconsistent with the airport's development pri- priorities as stated herein. And the, in the twenty-ten resolution. To make it very clear. That we, as a council and as a commission. If a project doesn't align with our priorities, we have every right and are encouraged to decline the project. I see our city attorney thinking.
Michael, did you, were you able to capture uh, the language as proposed by Councilmember Branning?
Essentially, yes. I think what you're saying is at the end of, yeah, sorry. At the end of uh, one point two, uh, following the last bullet there. Uh, saying that it could be rejected if there is not compatibility with uh, all of the uh, points. Pointed out in resolution twenty-ten dash zero five eight.
Yes, um, I think I heard something slightly different. I think I heard the words from you, Councilmember Branning, which was to discourage incompatible projects. I think that is stronger language. Um. If you could restate that, so Mr. Muska can write that down.
Yeah, so the bullet point I proposed would say something, and I'll read through a little slowly, so. Uh, something akin to a compatibility section. Uh, which would say along the lines of the development policy will discourage development. Inconsistent with the airport's development priorities as stated herein and in the twenty-ten resolution.
I think that meets my concerns, Mr. Muska.
That's fine. Unfortunately, we're recording this, so I.
I can also email that.
You could speak.
I'll, I'll email that wording to uh, Ms. Marashava and she can send it along to you as well, just to.
So, so I think we're, 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 as far as staff are able to support that language now, I think it's for the council to discuss whether they support your request to add that in.
Okay.
And I just wanted to point out, you, much earlier, you, you talked about the airport commission not having a rejection. In certain portions, uh, perhaps you, you're looking at pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Both of which are continuums of the previous, um. Flow charts.
Yeah, it was on the one on thirty-seven, which is the most complex flow chart, but I did not see it on.
It's right about the, it's the rectangle right about in the middle of it, where the city presents rankings to the airport commission. Thank you. Okay.
That's just me missing a complex flow chart. Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, so um. Just spend a few minutes um, thinking about this and sharing with you. Some of my thoughts. I want to thank everybody for being here and, and the staff for working on this. I'm the only one of the four of us up here. That was on council when this was, when the Kaiser Air. Um, issue raised its head. Sometime, not sure when, at this point, a couple of years ago anyway, but. Okay. And as you recall, there was a lot of concern within the community about. Um, additional jets and so on and so forth and noise and, and that kind of, many of the comments that we heard tonight. Were reflected back then, and I think we as a council at that time. Were concerned as to the point that Mr. Branning brought up, that we didn't want. Development uh, being proposed that. We are going to be, I guess, in a sense stuck with because our policy at the time. Didn't really meet our expectations for what we wanted the airport to look like for the future. So that's why we as a council. Uh, put a pause on the policy as it existed then. And asked staff to go out for public comment. Uh, put a pause on the policy as it existed then and asked staff to go out for public comment. And bring back uh another leasing and development policy, which was. Um, what's been presented this evening. I will admit that I didn't get this either until four forty one. And I had a meeting at five o'clock. So I frankly haven't even read it. And so I my suggestion, and now we have another suggestion from one of my colleagues, they had some language, so. I would support postponing this decision until at least the next council meeting, so the public. Can have the time to look at it so that I frankly can have the time to read it and digest the red. Uh, additions to this policy. That would be my suggestion.
So I'm not sure, do you table it and is that what we do to the next meeting, or I'm not sure we. I, that's what I was thinking about tabling it.
We could vote to continue.
Okay, whatever term is.
Couple of questions, well, one more question that I have, um. What is the difference between small parcel air cargo services and large parcel? Because people, people specifically spoke to concern over cargo services. And I was curious, what's the difference between the two?
The difference between the two is, you know, not to use brand names, but I think the large cargo are more the Amazon, FedEx, UPS. And small cargo are the feeders uh with caravan type of airplanes that feed uh. To larger airports feed to uh Amazon and and UPS. Or in the opposite direction, receive from those large uh cargoes and uh delivered specifically to. The uh local communities, so smaller airplanes, I think is the.
Because, you know, there there were concerns, and in in one hand, it says um that uh, you know, not to encourage the uh the large cargo and then in the. On the, in the economic under one point two, it says, support the local economy and ensure economic vitality through supporting small cargo air air services. So if we're making, if we're making revisions. There's since there are concerns about uh, and I've heard multiple concerns about the cargo services, that. We just have support the local economy and ensure economic vitality and period. And then we uh we remove that uh about the uh the air cargo.
It's under economic at the bottom of page three.
Economic.
Right, thank you.
And then uh. Under one point two function, um, in the original policy, uh, it states that. Uh, the airport commission will in fact be involved in the uh, uh, in the, the. About project evaluation, uh, so under one point two function, uh, it's got, it has, the airport advisory commission is lined out. But what I would suggest is encourage development of airport land in improvements to occur in response to existing aviation demand and then a period. And then projects will be evaluated by the airport advisory commission. So that that gives the public another opportunity to have public comment. So yes, it will come to the council, but then it will also, there will be the opportunity to have it be heard by the airport advisory commission. Uh, so that they can weigh in on the projects as well after the IDSRT. It hasn't had much opportunity to uh to vet those proposals.
Got it.
So those are my comments, uh. We have a suggestion uh to. To continue this, uh, customer branding, my thoughts?
Yeah, I'm comfortable continuing it, I think. Uh, I would like to look to staff first before we have that discussion, just to make sure that. That is, you know, acceptable and they are comfortable with that.
Well, it's also how how much time we have, because what the next agenda and the agenda after that are going to look like unless unless we propose to have a meeting in Au- in August.
Yeah, so I'm I'm comfortable with continuing it, but I'd turn to staff to hear from them first before making a decision.
Uh, through the mayor, council member uh Branning, of course, our preference would be uh for the decision to be made uh tonight, uh, because it does avoid uh an additional effort, but. If the council decides to continue this, the changes that um. The mayor and council member Branning proposed are relatively minor, we would be prepared to come back with them at the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, do we make a motion to that effect?
That be the preferred course set forth in urals of procedure, if there's a motion to continue this item to your next meeting, that would be the motion. And also for staff, direction to staff to incorporate the comments that were made here today to bring back the revised policy to you.
Councilman Carling, which is makes wish to make.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we continue the assignment till the next meeting and ask the uh staff to incorporate the comments from uh. The mayor and council member Branning into the uh into the document.
Okay, moved by a customer Carling, seconded by a customer Variantos. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Variantos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye.
Mister Mayor, if I may, um, I think it would be irresponsible for me as the city manager to leave this item. Without taking just a moment to really acknowledge the work by our staff, um, I know this has been a very sensitive issue. And there has been some criticism expressed, but I just wanted to take a moment and really express gratitude to our staff um. At the airport, uh, community development, legal staff for spending hours, weeks and months. Working on this policy for engaging with the public, not only in public meetings, but online through Pleasanton, through um Dublin. Um, I also wish that uh we uh received comments from Pleasanton earlier, unfortunately, we did not. We got them late last week and staff worked diligently on Friday and over the weekend to incorporate them, but. I just want to take the moment and acknowledge the diligent, caring efforts by staff. Thank you.
Well, let me echo that because uh I contributed to that because I handed three pages of questions uh to the staff. Uh, very in-depth and uh uh some some very difficult questions and it might. My uh severe, my gratitude to the staff for the taking the time to answer all those questions in depth. So gave me a much greater understanding of of the issues, so I certainly appreciate the the work the staff did on that, so yes. Uh, it is. Nine, but it's after nine o'clock and we usually take a break at nine, uh, do you guys want to just forge through, or did you want to take a ten minute break?
Uh, well, it's a short item next, what if we finish that, take a five, ten minute break and then do public comment?
All right. We have uh. Moving on to. Right, this is the uh.
Um, right.
So this is uh to appoint the uh two council members to serve in the uh council subcommittee advisory bodies, I believe it most recently it was council member Carley and council member Branning. Okay, and uh. So that would be, we would rotate, I imagine uh council member Variantos would be rotated in with council member Branning. Because we want one person in there with some experience.
Yeah, I spoke to his council member Carling since his term expires sooner. To have him stay on, since I'll have another opportunity for sure, but I'm open either way.
Okay, if you'd like another shot at, okay, uh, so it'll be customer Variantos and council member Carling. All right, okay, so that's uh seven point two.
Mister Mayor, I just, I would just ask the city clerk, do we have any comments on this particular item?
No, we do not.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. I don't, I think it's just an appointment. Do we need a motion? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, let's take a quick ten minute break and at nine thirty we'll be back. Thank you, and thank, thank you for all of your comments tonight on the airport. Yeah, it is, it's uh starting to heat up.
I mean, yeah, very much so, uh, because I was at uh, uh, the uh. Phone business, yeah, I mean, I'm there too, so, it's fun back with testing out these processes where they. Where they have to test the wipers, so there are like fifteen thousand sensors. That have to be exactly placed on these sensors, and that's why they're going to arm this, doing this thing. Because it has to be in exactly the right place for those sensors to check it without. That is possible.
My son was up there.
Okay.
My job. The marathon every few days.
Wow. Isn't that what they have robots for, is to go learn? Right, uh, maybe in a laser beam, so you can strengthen metals by uh using like a shock. But now they put a thing or moving on water and then shoot lasers on, you know, items enough. So they're making all the.
I could get technology to get that airport.
You know, it's gotta be.
My name. Danny, but I'm sorry. It's. So, so I. He needs, she needs some, some evidence of. Kind of just. And we go. Thank you. There you go. In hundreds. And then. I'm. One of the. Okay. Uh, Steve. It's. Yeah. Cool. Okay. That. That. I'm. Thank. You. For. How. It's. Now. The baby. Stop. What? You. Yeah. Speaking. I. Yeah. I'm. It's. Pretty. That's. It's. Come. I'm. I'm. Very. I'm. I'm. That. I'm. Going. To. Do. It. Now. See. I. It. I. I. The. Time. I. Yeah. I'm. Um. It's. So. The. Thing. It's. Um. It's. Still. I'm. 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 It's. Type. Maybe. It's. Kind. That. It's. My. I think. It's. 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 It. 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 I. Open.
Okay. All right. Let's get the show on the road here. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's nine thirty. Let's. Let's get the show on the road here. Thank you for your patience. Welcome back to the June twenty sixth meeting of the Livermore City Council, part two. We've just come back from the public hearing on the airport. And now we're going to go back to where we were. Item four point zero. It's the open forum. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And the city council cannot take action. We cannot deliberate on items that are brought up tonight because of the Brown Act. The items may be brought up at a later date. But at that point, I will now. City clerk would like to elaborate on the requirements to participate in the forum.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, this public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a city council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak over Zoom. To provide a comment over Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern or upon being unmuted. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. How many speakers do we have lined up so far?
So far, we have twenty six.
Twenty six. Okay. Um, all right. So just so everybody knows, I have read all of your emails, all of your letters. Yes, thank you very much. It was interesting. I received. I received almost a hundred and not one of you spelled my name right. So, but that's okay. That's all right. I'm used to that. It was the content of the letters that was important. But I have read every one of them. So recognizing that we don't need to go over the same things over and over again. If you agree with what somebody says before you say, I agree with that person. And we do want to hear from everybody. But I think it's in everybody's best interest that we don't hear the same thing over and over again. So once again, if you agree, great, say so. If you've got a differing opinion, please, please say it as well. So with that, I'm going to open up the open forum. And let's. So we get out here at a decent time. Let's get, let's go for two minutes, maximum of two minutes, if you would. First name.
Michael Godfrey, followed by David McWhiggin, followed by Lori Mara Christner.
Good evening, Mayor Marshon and council. I brought a few friends with me tonight. And so I only have two minutes. And I think what I'd like to say, and I don't know if this is possible, this is something, it's a mechanical thing, it's procedure. We'd like to be able to find a mechanism, maybe staff can recommend something, to revisit the staff recommendation and maybe work on that. There were some considerations from councilmen that they found either objectionable. They didn't make a, they didn't make a motion or anything last time. And I know you can't make a motion now, but we would like to have that item come up and be agendized for a future meeting so that possibly we can work out some sort of a compromise, maybe send it back to staff. Staff can take input from council members who have concerns and from the community. The community being, you know, the realtors and a lot of other people, you know, a church who has a sign on the corner on Sunday, come to church. Person is doing a garage sale, a winery out on Tesla Road. This is coming and taste our wines. There's a lot of people that are affected by this, and there's got to be a way that we can look at it objectively and come up with a solution. So I would urge the council to move that forward to a future meeting. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jay.
See, thank you.
Next speaker is David McWhiggin, followed by Lori Mara Christner, followed by Jennifer Branchini. Believe Dave McWhiggin is no longer with us. Next speaker is Lori Mara Christner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to hear our voices. I am a twenty year resident of Livermore. I'm also a Realtor. We respectfully request the ban on open house signs be repealed and revisited at a future public meeting. If the issue is with the political signs that the community, myself included, have an issue with, let's focus on those political signs. The open house signs are an investment in our business. We want them back. We will take them back. They're only out for a few hours at a time. I appreciate the opportunity and we respectfully request that the ban be repealed. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Jennifer Branchini, followed by Robin Young, followed by Kevin McCallum.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jennifer Branchini. I'm also a local Realtor. I've been working in the Tri-Valley for twenty five years. I also co-manage a large real estate office in Pleasanton and Livermore, and our agents help our clients buy and sell in Livermore. I'm also the twenty twenty three president of the California Association of Realtors. It's a trade association representing over two hundred thousand members. And part of my duties as a CAR president is traveling throughout the state to meet with our Realtor members. One thing they all have in common, and that even with all the high tech marketing and communication technology they use, it's the humble A-frame sign that helps buyers find the homes. During my years as Realtor, I've had many first time home buyers discover my listings because they noticed open house signs. We hope that you will reconsider the ban on temporary signs, including open house signs, as soon as possible while working on the sign rules that will protect the environment, aesthetics, and the needs of buyers who want to call Livermore their home. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Robin Young, followed by Kevin McCallum, followed by Geraldine Ramirez.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I am a small representative of a small business. We all are who work in the real estate industry. We are small business. There are other small businesses that rely on generating their source of service through signage. And a ban on sign would have a significant effect. And it would also have an effect on people who are coming to Livermore to see the community and decide if this is where they truly want to live. I can tell many, many stories of experiences of holding an open house. One story in particular, young couple came in. They happened to come to Livermore to have breakfast at the country waffle. And through driving around, checking out Livermore and the different neighborhoods, they happened to come across my open house signs, which led them to the Sunset area development. Make a long story short, they ended up buying that home. The wife, superintendent of a school district, husband, high school school teacher, not here in Livermore, one of our neighbors. That wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for those open house signs because they had no idea about the property that they were about to purchase and discovered it through the open house. So I request that we make a change on the band of the signs. Come up with some realistic comparable guidelines for all of us to follow and respect. And I thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Kevin McCallum, followed by Geraldine Ramirez, followed by Tony Arsandi.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshon, city council members. My name is Kevin McCallum. I'm a resident of Livermore and a Realtor. I think you've heard how important the open house signs are to us. I think the other thing that you must consider is, you know, putting something on the MLS, it's about clicks. We do get views there, but nothing happens until somebody goes and actually sees a house. Now, a lot of our prospective buyers are not from this area. They're actually from outside the region. They don't know our streets. They don't know our neighborhoods. They don't know where to go. These open house signs are crucial for them finding where to go. The other thing is we serve a service to our clients. Those are the people, Livermore residents, trying to market their house and get a storefront. We do not have a storefront. Every downtown business has a storefront where you can find them. Ours is a mobile thing that goes all over the city. And the, and the best way to find it is with an open house sign. I would like to address one thing that was brought up at the last city council meeting with regards to this. These signs are sustainable. They are reusable. We care for these signs. We don't discard them, and they don't go into non-recyclable trash. And I don't think we should make them be penalized as a climate action offense. So I would encourage us to look at a way that we can move forward with the new sign ordinance that would allow temporary signs in Livermore. Thank you.
Next speaker is Geraldine Ramirez, followed by Tony Arsandi, followed by Devin Corcoran.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Geraldine Ramirez. I am a Livermore resident, and I am also a Realtor. This ordinance not only affects the way I do business, but most importantly, it affects my clients, the clients I serve. Using the open house signs allows me to properly market their properties. With these signs, I attract potential buyers that drive around our city on the weekends looking for a home to buy. In return, this, my client, it not having these open signs and not allowing these buyers to come to my open houses will prevent my, my client from reaching the goal of selling the house and will affect their bottom line. So all buyers do not have access to the MLS. They rely on these signs to locate our properties. So I respectfully ask you to please reconsider the implementation of this ban. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tony Arsandi, followed by Devin Corcoran, followed by Mary Ann Rosa.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving us this time. I am a local real estate agent here in town, and I also live here in Livermore. I run a team of ten. So I'm actually representing more than just myself and all the, our colleagues here. So number one, like a couple people said, the signs are environmentally friendly. Number two, we do take up the signs up and down the same day as the open house. And there's been a lot of cases where we have had people maybe just walking in a neighborhood that maybe would have never have known about the open house if they didn't see the sign. Some may be elderly, some may be different walks of life. It doesn't matter. It's just they would have never known without seeing the sign. So I think that's important to know. And also, this is how people on, in real estate, they, they generate business. And also, this is how people on, in real estate, they generate business, they generate leads by having these signs open. And in fact, our industry, one in real estate sale also generates, but helps seven other businesses, seven to 10 home inspectors, contractors. So just the generating a sale in real estate helps out all these different industries. So anyways, just wanted to notate that. And I think a lot of people have touched on some other things. So that'll be it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Devon Corkery, followed by Mary Ann Rosa, followed by Tammy Barstow.
Hello, esteemed city council. As a second generation real estate agent and Livermorean, I am beautifully value the principle transparency, community engagement, and involved decision-making. Imploing you reconsider decisions that our community. Open house signs have served as an essential tool in our real estate landscape, bridging the gap between potential buyers and sellers and enabling them to explore homes and neighborhoods freely. They create an atmosphere of inclusiveness, extending an open invitation to individuals who may not consider homeownership otherwise. A first time home buyer may never converse with that Realtor to realize their dream of owning a home in Livermore is possible. An out of area brother and sister who have just inherited their deceased mother's home might struggle to connect with a local Realtor on what is the best course of action when selling her home. By eliminating these signs, we risk erecting barriers that hinder accessibility and opportunity for all. And yes, these scenarios both happen because of open house signs. In addition, open house signs foster community engagement by encouraging interaction between potential buyers and local residents. They provide an avenue for neighbors to showcase their unique qualities of their area, strengthening the social fabric that binds us together. Removing these signs may inadvertently dampen the sense of unity and collectivity that makes our community thrive. It is crucial to recognize that open house signs support our local economy by bolstering the Livermore industry. Realtors, mortgage brokers, contractors, other professionals depend on these signs to effectively market available properties. And pending a ban could have an adverse effect impacting the livelihood of hardworking individuals who contribute significantly to our local economy. Open house signs are temporary and are placed on the curb for the duration of the open house. Afterwards, they are removed. If a Realtor has a day of back-to-back open houses, they are repeating this process. I believe that there are alternative solutions that strike a balance between aesthetics and practicality. Perhaps we could explore new guidelines regarding open house signs to ensure a fair compromise both the community and local real estate professionals can support. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Mary Ann Rosa, followed by Tammy Barstow, followed by Dawn Fott.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and Councilmembers. Thank you very much for allowing us this time today. I'm probably the senior Realtor here with 43 years. And I just want to say that over the years, I can't even imagine how many open houses that I have held. And the, one of the first questions that I asked someone coming in my listing, how'd you find me? And many times they would say, I didn't know anything about this neighborhood. I followed your signs. Have I sold houses for these signs? Definitely, over the years. And sometimes those very people will go to their agents and say, why didn't you show me this house? I love it. So they do right with another agent, but that's very fine with me. So, and it's my fiduciary duty to do everything I can for my seller to bring as many people through that property so that they will generate the highest and best price for their property. So I really encourage you to go back to the drawing boards and come up with something that will be more equitable for all of us in the real estate industry. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Tammy Barstow, followed by Dawn Fott, followed by Ricky Walters.
Thank you for having us here tonight, Mayor and Councilman. I wanted to just share with you, ditto everything my colleagues said, so I had to tear up my sheet. But I wanted to let you know that we have brought many people to this area that have come up from San Jose, Santa Clara, San Francisco, et cetera, that were out visiting families. In fact, one of my clients was coming to visit their mom and saw the open house sign came. Not only did they have children here, but now their children are purchasing homes too, to just bring more business to our Livermore community. So again, like Devon said and Tony said, I believe, it's not only employing us, but it's employing everybody else from the insurance and title, inspectors, lenders, title companies, et cetera. So anyways, please put a ban or a delay, bring it back to the table and delay the ban if possible. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dawn Fott, followed by Ricky Walters, followed by Jean King.
Good evening. Thank you so much. As a 20-year resident of Livermore, I just want to say thank you for all that you've tried to do for us over the years, keeping Livermore a great place to live. Very proud to be able to raise my children here. They couldn't afford to live here anymore, so they've left, but I'm still here. And one of the things that hasn't been said, I haven't heard, there will be a time when some, when everyone's going to have to sell their homes. Every homeowner will have to, either because they want to and move on, or because of a hardship. Having no, not allowing our signs to market these properties will definitely affect that. So I'd like to urge you to maybe visit us one more time. There has to be a way that we can work this out and come to a compromise that benefits everyone. Again, I don't like seeing these signs at election time. That's definitely a blight on the community. And I can't see that these are good for our environment. Our Realtor signs are. And you know, these signs, Realtors pay $75 or more for each one of those open house signs, $75 or more. They are sustainable, they're used week after week after week. I don't think the same thing happens to with some, with the other signs. So maybe perhaps you put it in a fine system, I think there used to be one, where you pick up the signs on the weekends. You charge $50 per sign for someone to pick it up, you could have a revenue source. So anyway, thank you very much for having me.
Next speaker is Ricky Walters, followed by Jean King, followed by Moni Knapp.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I just want to implore you to not throw the baby out with the bath water, which I think is what's happening with this current thing that's being passed or has been passed. I know it's inevitable, I know we can't stop for July 1, but we urge you to make haste to get it on the agenda as soon as possible at the very next possible meeting. Because I'm a mortgage broker and I work with lots of Realtors behind me, my friends. And every time I work an open house, without exception, neighbors come because they see the open house sign. And they're not just there to look, many of them are there looking for their family members, their children, grandparents, whatever. Do we really want to discourage our family members who live in Livermore from bringing their other family members to live in the same neighborhood that they live in? That's what those open house signs are doing, and without them, you're going to see that go away. Lastly, I'd just like to ask the city council to consider what the cost of this is going to be. If you're having neighborhood preservation, the time, as well as the cost of paying those people to police the current situation that you have. I think you need to really consider that and it's, it's bad for the city, it's bad for Livermore, it's bad for the community. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Jean King, followed by Moni Knapp, followed by Sean Leggett.
I don't have a house for sale. I'm here to plug Tuesday tunes. Concerts on Tuesday evenings on the Shea Home stage in front of the Bankhead Theater, June, July, and August. From 8:45 to, excuse me, from 6:45 to 8:15 PM and they're free. They're presented by LCAC, the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. The major sponsor is Shea Homes. And tomorrow is the Frankie Bones Project. Local group, he takes standards from Jimmy Buffett, Paul Simon and the Beatles, and he makes them his own. You bring food from home or from a restaurant and have a picnic while enjoying the entertainment. Last week, I got a takeout pizza in a compostable box that when finished, I took it home and I put it in my green can. Okay, earlier this month, I took my own container to a restaurant and they put my takeout food in my home container. Last week, I got takeout from two other establishments in Livermore and I brought them with me, but I left them back at the feet. One was compostable. The other takeout container was neither compostable nor recyclable. When will Livermore enforce its rules that takeout containers must be compostable or recyclable? And did you know that according to a report by the National Institute of Health, 5.25 trillion plastic particles circulate in our surface waters? Thank you.
Next speaker is Moni Knapp, followed by Sean Leggett, followed by Sophie Mayo.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Since I was a former candidate and a Realtor, I have a couple things to share with you. First of all, most people think that they can only put out campaign signs 60 days before an election. This is in fact incorrect. According to the Livermore Development Code, section 4.061, point 140A12 and B2, candidates can place their campaign signs into the public 60 days before a special election, also known as early voting. According to the City Clerk's Office, the early voting day was October 12th in '22. Essentially because of the six day rule before the earlier voting day, a candidate can place his or her campaign signs into the public as early as August 11th, which was essentially 88 days prior to election day on November 8th, 2022. Because of this current law in place, there was never an issue to begin with in this city. We simply, for those of us who put out the sign, we simply follow the law legally and place those signs out into the public. So I have a couple recommendations, if I may. Number one is that if we are gonna look at the, we ask all of you to take a look at this policy and reverse your decision and come to a compromise and work with us. But if we're gonna do it, a couple, my recommendations, number one is that consider a simple 60-day period before any election for all future candidates to put out their campaign signs. This way, there's no ambiguity, misunderstanding, or confusion like it is now as to what candidates can and cannot do with the campaign signs. And number two, if we are going to make a policy, I, you know, I know that all of you here take note that, you know, we are one big community. Right now, the current policy says, hey, you could, you could put out, you can't put out a sign unless you're downtown business owners. All of us, no matter where we are in the city as business owners, are simply business owners. So we should have the same rights as everybody else to advertise, to display a sign. So this way, we attract the business that we need for our community. And as a matter of fact, when you look at real estate, real estate is the greatest revenue, source of revenue for our city when it comes to the built-in transaction. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Sean Leggett, followed by Sophie Mayo, followed by Francis Rogers.
Good evening, all. Sean Leggett, 23-year resident of Livermore. I think it's a big negative impact to my sellers, buyers as well. I mean, sellers, we're going to have less people coming through. Less people coming through equals less offers potentially. Less offers equals less revenue or less money for the seller. So it's kind of a big negative for the sellers, less signs. Also, at the same time, I feel as if it's a safety issue and you guys may say that's far-fetched. But the more people coming through an open house, the safer the Realtor is there. We have a Realtor that got robbed on Tesla years ago. And had that been an open house and people were coming through, that wouldn't have happened because another person would have been coming through. So as a safety issue, the more people that come through, the better, the more signs, the more people. I just think there's some positives to it. When it comes to the signs as well, we do put, we do pick them up, we put them away. There are some Realtors that don't and they shouldn't. So I agree with what everyone said and I do ask that you, you know, rethink this policy and give us, let's work together. Let's just work together, you know, try and resolve this. And thank you.
Next speaker is Sophie Mayo, followed by Francis Rogers, followed by Carol Silva.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and Livermore City Council members. I am Sofailene Mao, a Livermore resident, Realtor, and a member of the Bay East Association of Realtors. My objective this evening is to ask for your consideration, reconsideration regarding the temporary ban on signs. Needless to say, I'm so relieved the election from 2022 is over. Such a ban on signs would significantly harm and negatively impact our homeowners who are selling their home during this already tumultuous time. Open house signs serve all the elementary principles that I learned in business school. One, creating visibility and awareness. Two, ensuring targeted marketing. Three, encouraging neighborhood engagement. Four, increasing buyer confidence. And lastly, providing supplementary marketing that's going to be inclusive of buyers who may not have digital literacy or access to social media channels. With all due respect, the decision to get rid of the temporary signs was a bit reactive and it is already causing a lot of hurt for my fellow colleagues here who are already facing a business downturn. House, open house signs do not serve as environmental litter for they are quite expensive and they are a marketing investment. Thank you for your service, leadership and support. And please reconsider the ban on the temporary signs. Thank you.
Next speaker is Francis Rogers, followed by Carol Silva, followed by Constance Cops.
Good evening. My name is Francis Rogers. I live in Livermore for the last 10 years at 6 and N. In 2017, we invested in a addition over our garage in an office in the back. It was for a sick mother who by the time it was done, could no longer make it up and down the stairs. My wife creatively thought up the opportunity to create an Airbnb, which we've successfully operated for the last five years, but we only were open three of those because we closed for the pandemic. We only made it available 170 days a year and we made about $16,000 to $20,000 a year. As you know, you passed a short-term rental ordinance. So I went and inquired about it before I applied for a permit. I went down to the city council and received a copy of the ordinance and then made an appointment with the person I was told was the point when creating this ordinance. After reading just the first three pages, I realized that I had to do a little research because I didn't really know how our addition, which was really, it's just a suite. It's like got kitchen facilities, a bed, a couch, a table and a bathroom. But it's permitted as an accessory dwelling unit, which makes it, it's prohibited with the new ordinance. So in effect, you just put us out of business and you took $16,000 to $20,000 out of my, my wife's pocket. We've never had a complaint. There's plenty of parking. My, mainly because of my wife, we have a five-star rating from all of our guests who all enjoy being in our place. We only live three blocks from downtown. I can assure you that about the 90 to 100 guests that we've had have spent well over $100,000 all in Livermore and left with a good taste. So when I went down to talk to a development staffer, nobody knew why, you know, why this law was the way it was, other than a vague thing, which I tried to research that the state encourages the use of ADUs for long-term rentals to solve the state's housing crisis. Well, from my own point of view, I don't think it should be our investment and our assets that are used to solve the state's housing problems. So it caused real harm to us. There's no good that has come out of it. And I'm asking that you reconsider it. I don't know if there's other people like us that are in this position. But reconsider it, grandfather us in, or eliminate that part of the ordinance. I also asked, I put two calls into the development director, a gentleman called Mr. Spence. I've received no call, a callback after two calls in the last week. And I just had a brief and formal conversation here with.
However, I have good news for you.
I'm done.
Okay, I have good news for you. That's Mr. Spence right there. He'll give you his card and he'll be in touch.
Yeah, well, it'd be good if you returned phone call too, yeah. And I also asked if you would, you know, reconsider the harm that you've done to us because no good has come from it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carol Silva, followed by Constance Cops, followed by Glenn Riggs.
Good evening again. The morning of Sunday, June 18th, there was a water main break and it was also Father's Day on June 18th. And I wanted to give kudos to the city staff and personnel who ended up promptly coming to our neighborhood and working on the water main break. And so I wanted to let you know that I appreciate it. There was one little negative thing and I don't know who might have been involved in it, but one of our neighbors mentioned to my husband that we live along the Arroyo Las Pecitas. They said that the Arroyo afterwards, there was an area of the water that didn't look right. And then later on, my husband and I, we walked down to the area of where the water main break was and there was, it wasn't your typical straw wattle that was around a storm drain. It was a rectangular waddle that was fit over the grill, but someone had peeled it back, I guess, to allow water to drain into the storm drain, which leads out to the Arroyo Las Pecitas. But anyway, besides that, I do want to give kudos to the city council and to the maintenance department for promptly coming out and working on the water main break. Thank you.
Next speaker is Constance Cops, followed by Glenn Riggs, followed by Doug Mann.
Hi, I'm Constance Cops. I saw Ben Varentos and our city manager and our park, our Public Works Director at the Elks Club meeting for Springtown. And I was wondering what next. I think that these people have been misinformed. I don't see anybody that was at meetings prior to this. I saw you at one at the very beginning, Mayor, and I saw you at the Elks. And forgive me if you've been at other meetings for Springtown that I'm just not noticing. But I think that a lot of good things could happen there and we need to brief these people in on what they missed because they're making decisions based on prior meetings that they've admitted they know very little about. And there's so much we could do up there. One of the things that, you know, I know we brought up at one of the original meetings back in 2016 or 17, and that was a frisbee golf where businesses would sponsor each hole. And then there were other things brought up too, but they should have been discussed then and not there. There's a lot that they don't know about the ownership and about what occurred. And it's going to cause trouble, I think, down the road if we don't correct this and nip this in the bud. Brief them in on what happened and what has been fair and unfair. And basic questions like who owns what and who's responsible for what? Those are questions that I deserve to not get answers to because I'm a responsible homeowner. I care about what happens. I've been to meetings since 2004. And basic questions have gone unanswered. Basic information was unavailable when I called the county. We need to get it together on that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Glenn Riggs, followed by Doug Mann, followed by Jeff Caskey.
Hello and good evening. My name is Glenn Riggs. I'm a Livermore resident. I was actually born here, so I won't tell you how long I've been a Livermore resident, but I'm also a Realtor. I want to tell you a story about a couple that lived in Hayward. They were renting in Hayward. They were looking to buy homes in the Hayward area, but they were unable to find the home that they were looking for. They were newlyweds and expecting parents. They'd come to Livermore to worship. That's where their church is and was. On their way home from church, they happened to see one of my open house signs. They made their way through Vasco Road, found their way to the open house. They made an offer on the home the following Monday and they are now Livermore residents. Without those simple, those four signs that I put out and then collected at the end of my open house, they wouldn't have been able to find that home and bring them into our community. Now, if I can't put open house signs up, I'm forced to find other ways to get word out. That means I'm risking the safety of my middle school child who now has to become a sign twirler on the corner to direct people to my open houses, or I have to hire a low-flying biplane aircraft burning lead fuel to tow open house signs around Livermore. So I ask you to please reconsider the ban. to tow open house signs around Livermore. So I ask you to please reconsider the ban.
The next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Jeff Caskey, followed by Alyssa Erickson.
As Secretary of Citizens for Balanced Growth, here it is. CBG values our historical partnership with the city of Livermore as we have worked together on environmental protection. We began our cooperative efforts more than 20 years ago. When the city joined our successful lawsuit against a damaging development that ultimately created a multimillion dollar fund to acquire open space. The city and CBG continue to enjoy a shared goal and partnership to protect open space and the environment. Today, Garaventa Hill is first on our list to protect, and that is why the following subject is troubling. The general counsel of the FPPC, Mr. Bainbridge, sent a letter on June 16th to your city attorney. He states, LaFerriti is currently preparing a revised EIR for the project and the revised EIR and renewed application will be submitted to the planning commission. He also mentions that LaFerriti Communities is the owner of the hill, which we know to be false. This raises a number of questions that beg clarity. CBG has made public records requests so that we may review the root sources of this official communication and hopefully provide answers as to the genesis of this, these surprising statements. On numerous occasions, we have already made it clear to your staff that we want to be informed about any development efforts that may jeopardize Garaventa Hill. Whatever the city knows, we need to know. CBG has been educating, protecting and defending, uh, for four decades. And here's something we've learned. It's not unusual that after an agency's staff members become involved in a process such as the tenures of Garaventa, it takes time for them to relearn new habits when conditions change. Garaventa Hill is no longer developable and that truth is a newer concept for city staff. It is entirely appropriate for your city manager to give her staff regular reminders of that change and preempt unintentional negative results. Otherwise, she risks having people on the inside against council's wishes.
Next speaker is Jeff Caskey, followed by Alyssa Erickson, followed by David Stark.
Good evening. I was surprised this council cited the climate action plan when rejecting the sign ordinance that they asked staff to revise. It was worth considering the consequences of this action. Prior to this change, district, a district candidate might buy as many as 300 signs or 1,200 for a citywide campaign. Many campaigns do fine with less. Signs are wildly efficient. A single sign gets multiple views by multiple voters throughout the campaign season. Each of you spoke about how voters could get the information in other ways, and yet each of you put out signs for your own campaigns. So either you were trying to waste money or you recognize that signs are the cost-effective way of letting your neighbors know that you're interested in representing them. Without signs along the main roads, campaigns will look elsewhere for exposure and mailers are the next best choice. A modest target is 10 name impressions, although the signs will get you many more. A district is about 10,000 voters, so sending 10 mailings is 100,000 flyers per district, per candidate or ballot measure. Mailing those is about $30,000 and about 20,000 for printing. That many flyers is a pretty big dent in your climate action goal. And 50,000 is a lot more than it cost last year to run for a council district. 300 recyclable, yes, they are available, 300 recyclable signs is only about a thousand dollars. Note that these numbers are four times bigger for citywide issues or office. Incumbents have a substantial advantage over any outside challenger. All of this means that running a challenge campaign has gotten much more expensive. So don't complain about the money spent in the next election. A lot more flyers will be printed and will be tossed. Campaigns will cost substantially more. Incumbents will be, have an even more significant advantage. Last meeting of speakers said that the political signs were divisive. I know that democracy can be annoying. We don't have to be enemies, but we will disagree and elections are where we air those differences. Please reconsider the sign ordinance and keep those elections from costing insane amounts of money and creating millions of pieces of waste. Also, I am curious how this will apply to the rodeo cowboy signs we're used to seeing all around town. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alyssa Erickson, followed by David Stark, followed by Dorothy Brodderson.
Hello, my name's Alyssa and I am a Realtor and wanted to represent the younger generation of Realtors and share how open houses have affected our business. And while most people think that the next generation uses their phones for everything, I actually have several clients my age who found my open house signs came in, didn't think homeownership was attainable, especially with the difficulty with affordability for the younger generation. And, um, we got creative, found a way for them to be able to purchase a home in Livermore and use that home and then sell it to pay off a lot of debt, which they did not think would be possible. Um, and another story I wanted to share, being the younger generation was, we do look at political signs as well. I actually found a couple candidates that I did not hear about before due to the signs and was able to do a lot of research and be more informed when I was voting. And I know I'm not the only one, um, with that same experience. So thank you.
Next speaker is David Stark, followed by Dorothy Brodderson.
Good evening. I'm David Stark. I'm the chief public affairs and communications officer for the Bay East Association Realtors. Thank you for staying up so long and for accommodating all of our speakers. I have two specific asks for the council. Actually, one ask for the council and one ask for staff. I would ask that, um, I believe it's on item eight on your agenda tonight, that one of you show leadership and initiate an immediate review of the ban on temporary signs in the public right of way and possibly a reconsideration of the ordinance that was brought to you, approved by your planning commission, developed by staff through a stakeholder process. Reconsider that, um, that ordinance. For staff, I have a ask as well. The citywide ban on, or the, the ban on temporary signs in the public right of way kicks in July 1st, which is just a few days away. Um, staff was kind enough to provide you with sections of municipal code that indicates how the ordinance will be enforced and the penalties. It's pretty technical. Um, I'm a policy analyst, so I, I understood it. However, there are many residents who are not policy analysts. Uh, anyone that's going to be conducting an open house course is going to be subjected to this. Anyone conducting a yard sale, a bake sale, a garage sale, uh, a rodeo. Uh, there are many people throughout your community that will be immediately impacted by this ordinance. I'm not sure they know about what the new rules are, so I would encourage staff to make it, um, as clear as possible, as quickly as possible. This ordinance, it's going to impact your entire community starting July 1st. I understand there's nothing that you can do to stop this ban happening starting July 1st. However, because of the unintended consequences that will be coming on July 1st, many of these speakers have mentioned the logistical, uh, issues related to implementing this ordinance. I would implore you to consider revisiting this ban as soon as possible for the integrity of this community and for the fiscal integrity of your operations as well. Thank you.
The final speaker is Dorothy Brodderson.
Good evening. Thank you. I agree with all of my colleagues here. Um, one of the other issues, I'm also the sales manager for Remax Accord in Livermore here. And when I mentioned to my clients what I was going to be doing tonight, they were shocked as homeowners in Livermore that they can no longer post a lost pet sign, open house, or when they have garage sales, that kind of thing. Several of them run holiday boutiques. So this ordinance does not only affect the Realtors, which it has a huge impact, but I want to implore you that this was a friendly community and this is not sending a friendly message to your residents. And they're not happy either, and a lot of them don't realize that they're not going to be able to put their lost pet signs and that kind of thing. So please, please take another look at this because it affects the public. It doesn't just affect us Realtors. Thank you.
That was the final speaker.
Okay, I'm going to close the, uh, the open forum. Thank you all very much for your comments tonight. Uh, we read your comments. We've heard your comments and thank you for staying as long as you did. Uh, I appreciate, uh, you allowing that, uh, that shift in the, in the schedule tonight to accommodate everybody. Uh, we've gotten the business done tonight, so, so thank you very much. Uh, with that, we're going to move to, uh, uh, council reports and matters initiated, item number, uh, eight. Got a second here and make sure I got this right. Yes. Council member, uh, Branning, report out.
Thank you. Uh, I have nothing new to report out that wasn't in my, uh, document. Uh, I will say just for, uh, everyone on council in the audience, I went and got to speak with Youth Build, uh, which is an organization that helps train youth to get job training. Uh, they invited me as a council member. It was a great experience and I'd recommend everyone on council, uh, when given the opportunity, learn a little more, ask me about it. Love to fill you in on it. Thank you.
Ms. McCurling?
Thank you very much and thanks to all the people that have not left for their comments, not because they're leaving, but for their comments. Uh, see, um, in addition to what I submitted, um, on the 17th, I just wanted to, um, point out, um, there's lots of ways this community comes together. And on the 17th, uh, my wife and I enjoyed, uh, starting with the Quest Science, um, activity that they had for kids over on Stockman's Park. It was terrific. We then wandered over to the Juneteenth celebration in front of the bankhead and got some lunch there and then headed over to, uh, the train depot for us to help celebrate the 50-year celebration anniversary for the Heritage Guild. And I think the mayor was there as well. So that was, it was a terrific afternoon and just, um, simple symptomatic of, I think of the remarkable community that we all love and share. On the 22nd, uh, council member Branning and I, uh, conducted some interviews for the, uh, youth advisory council. And I have to say that we had a number of very, very excellent candidates and we should be very proud of some of the students, uh, that we have coming to participate in LAAC and offering their time and their talent, uh, to this community as well. And we had the privilege of, uh, of nominating five, uh, young people to serve, uh, for the future of that. On the 24th, um, Troop 939, as many of you may be built there, I don't know. It's kind of gets old. I'm an Eagle Scout. We have three sons that are Eagle Scouts, so I've been very much involved in the Boy Scouts of America for a long time, not recently, but for a long time in my, earlier in my career in, um, Troop 939, which meets out of the First Presbyterian Church, had their 100-year celebration of when they chartered as a troop. And so again, the mayor and I were, um, invited and had, uh, enjoyed being there to help them celebrate that. Later, the mayor and I, again, we seem to be going to many of the same things. Um, were able to go to Goodness Village and it's, there was a fundraiser over there for Goodness Village. Uh, the, uh, tiny home community out at, uh, Crosswinds Church. And again, they're doing a fabulous job and it was a wonderful evening and a very, very great time. One other thing I'd like to promote again, I is, uh, if you have an opportunity to go to Spark, which is the Shakespeare, Livermore Shakespeare, they're out at, um, Darcy Kent and they currently are, uh, conducting a play called Silent Sky. And for a community of ours where science is a big part of, uh, our DNA, this is about a, uh, a woman and around the turn of the, around 1904, 195, 1910, somewhere in there, who, um, was at Harvard, uh, who was very instrumental in understanding how to measure the distance of stars. Unfortunately, and this is a true story, but the, uh, it's a great, great play that they're putting on at Darcy Kent. And just to give you a sense that this young woman, uh, developed stomach cancer and died at an early age of 50-something. She would have won the Nobel Prize had she survived long enough. But it is a wonderful, wonderful story and I, um, encourage people, if they haven't gone to see it, um, please do. And then the next show that they're going to be doing is much ado about nothing. Uh, bless the Shakespeare part of it. And, uh, we have the pleasure of hosting the male lead in Silent Sky, so he's staying at our house, uh, which is another reason I encourage you to. And I see Mary Sweeney here, who's responsible for placing all the actors, uh, for Spark in homes in and around Livermore. So again, thank you, Mary, for your contribution there. But if you have a chance, please go see Silent Sky. It is terrific. Thank you.
I've got my tickets already. Ms. Bariantos.
Well, um, if you don't know by now, I'm on, on the EBCE, which is now going to be AVA. And so that's a name change of the East Bay. Um, and it was changed because, uh, Tracy and Stockton didn't like that they were being pulled into the East Bay. So that was really the whole thing. They wanted to be, they said, we're not East Bay. We don't want anything to do with East Bay. So they came up with, they went through 150 names before, and like one guy said, some were bow-wows, but it came down to Ava, which is the name of my niece. I didn't have any thoughts on that. So, um, and, um,
what does it stand for?
It was, uh, Alameda and then Valley, E-A for Valley. So they brought it together, Alameda Valley, but they're not, they're just going to pronounce it AVA. And there's going to be some money allocated to help the cities rename and redo their, their, whatever we put out from Livermore. Um, and I keep pushing the idea of having, uh, solar panels put in behind the police station. Cause, uh, Jeremy, the captain, said that our equipment is getting destroyed back there because there's no place to put, uh, police cars and motorcycles in. So I, I was telling Nick, the, the CEO, that, hey, win-win. Put some panels in, you get the power and we get the cover to protect our car back there. Um, then I did go to the Juneteenth. Uh, that was, uh, fun. Went through that, checked it out and it was really nice. The bands were great too. Um, then, um, then I did have another EBCE thing. One was a subcommittee and the other was a, a regular board meeting. And we did approve a budget and, uh, the name changed. And then I did go to see the sinkhole. I want to go see sinkhole because my wife's from Florida and I've been to sinkholes over there and those are like four stories deep. This was a little tiny sinkhole. And by the time I got there, they almost had it covered up. It was quick. The, the crews that went out there, the, and the gentleman said that they'd never seen a plastic pipe break the way. That one broke. So they're surprised about the, the pipe and how it broke. And they did a quick job and I guess we're going to go back there and redo the whole thing later on. That's what he said that was going to happen. Uh, another thing is I did go to ribbon cutting with the mayor. Gets around. So we went to that ferrotech. It was interesting watching the equipment, the robots work there. That's a new plant over at Lisa. And it was very impressive and they didn't let us go into the clean rooms. We weren't authorized. So, uh, and I, I, I put on here, and I guess I should say, I did have a chance to meet with a new candidate for the fifth senate seat. We are now part of the fifth senate seat. It goes, it used to go just on the other side of Mount House. Now it comes all the way into Dublin. So the new candidate came out, her name is Isabella Pudda. And we had a talk about home affordable housing and climate change and all that, pushing our ideas. And she would be willing to come over and see what we have, maybe connect some there with the Senate people there. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Um, okay, real quick, uh, I'm not going to report on everything, but on, uh, uh, June 16th, we had the groundbreaking for the L Street Garage. This is to meet the needs. The number one priority that people had about the downtown was more parking, uh, and that's what the city council is providing. We had the ribbon cutting for that. It's, uh, uh, going to have, uh, I think 30 bike lockers and, uh, 50, uh, EV stations. So it's going to be, uh, uh, quite, uh, quite the, uh, parking structure. Uh, on the 17th, uh, again, as everybody said, we were all at the Juneteenth celebration at Shea Plaza. And, uh, later the day, I presented a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Heritage Guild at the depot, which the Livermore Heritage Guild was created to save the depot. So it was, uh, uh, coming full circle. The, uh, L County Transportation Commission, we received updates on state and federal legislative activities. Uh, and also a thing called the local distribution, uh, compliance report, which also included the pavement condition indices. Uh, and it turns out that Livermore has the second best pavement quality in Alameda County. The only city that's better is, is Dublin because. The only city that's better is Dublin because a lot of Dublin streets are newer than ours. But I think it's a validation of the great job that we have in public works, that we keep up on the paving here and we maintain the roads because it's easier to maintain them than allow them to fail and then try to come back and repair them. So certainly congratulations to the great work that our public works department is doing. The, again, as Councilman Burcarling mentioned, the Boy Scouts of America, their hundredth anniversary for Boy Scout Troop nine thirty-nine. And let's see, on the twenty-fifth, we received a, an update. Almond County Fair Foundation had a program. They're working on a sustainable educational farm at, at the fairgrounds. So that's very exciting and the idea of how do we grow that next generation of farmers and people that are going to be providing the food and, and the wine to our, to our region. So it's, that was a great program. So we're going to be working with the Almond County Mayor's Conference to continue that to, to work. With that, there was a direct ask from David Stark to ask if the council would be willing to move ahead with reconsidering the, the sign ban. So I will, will ask the question, is there interest in, in revisiting that? No, so we're two?
I am, sure.
Okay, and two. We need three. So we didn't get there. Thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn to the next meeting of July tenth, right here at City Hall. Thank you very much.